All right, Mr. Mayor, we are live. The floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Good evening and welcome. This is the regular meeting of the City of Morro Bay City Council. It is Tuesday, January 11th, 2022. It is 5:30 PM. This meeting is being held via teleconference. And I'll ask the clerk if she'll establish a quorum, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Barton? I do not see in the queue yet. Councilmember Heller?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
And Mayor heading?
Present. So we do have a quorum. I will call this meeting to order and ask that in your own way if we could just take a moment of silence to remember those in need. Thank you. And I'll ask if we have our flag. We will do the pledge. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag--
By--
--United States of America--
America.
--and to the republic--
The republic which stands--
One nation, under God--
Indivisible--
Indivisible--
With liberty--
And justice--
For all.
Thank you. Pursuant to Executive Order Number N-08-21 issued by Governor Newsom on June 11th, 2021, this meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on cable Channel 20 and streamed on the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public, by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for this meeting. Thank you again and welcome. And I will go ahead and ask our city attorney if we have a closed session report, sir. Mr. Neumeyer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No closed session items to report tonight.
Thank you, Chris. We'll go to mayor and council members' reports. First, let me start by wishing all of our community members and those watching a very Happy New Year. Hopefully you had a pleasant holiday season. I know that we had a nice break, but it's good to be back in action again. I wanted to give as much of an update on COVID-19 as I can. It's gotten so detailed in terms of the information that is floating around, but the majority of information can be found on readyslow.org, our county public health website, where there is extensive information on vaccine, testing, actual numbers, the mask mandates, current CDC guidelines, and a whole number of things. I wanted to let the community know that we are in a significant surge of COVID. About 75% of the cases identified in the county over the last month have been the Omicron variant, and about 25% are the Delta variant. Since Friday, we have surged to add an additional 1,121 new cases. That is 1,121 new cases just since last Friday through this morning. The positivity rate, in other words, the percent of individuals that are positive when tested, is at an all-time high. It's almost 20%. That's one in five COVID tests completed in the county are positive now. That compared to a year ago where we had what then was a high of 11.1 or about 11% positivity rate. It's a doubling of the positivity rate and speaks to the rapidity to which the Omicron variant of COVID is more easily transmittable and spreads more rapidly from individual to individual. The county, we're at 300, unfortunately, and 75 deaths, and we mourn the loss of those individuals. As of today, we have 41 individuals in the hospital, eight of which are in the ICU. Our 14-day average for cases, and this is a major indicator, sits at almost an all-time high of 283 cases. That's the 14-day average. That is similar, again, to one year ago. January of 2021, we were at about the same rate. There are a large number of new recommendations that have come out and seemingly changed fairly rapidly. There is an indoor mask mandate in the County of San Luis Obispo. I direct you to either the CDC website to look under the type of masks that are most appropriate. The recommendations are moving towards N95 masks as opposed to others, but go to the CDC website, that's www.cdc.gov, to get the actual details of the types of masks that are most protective against the Omicron variant of COVID-19. There have been new guidance just given out by the county and CDC for quarantine. That can be found at readyslow.org. For those that have either been exposed to COVID but do not have a positive test, that would mean that you would quarantine. Isolation is for individuals who have actually received a positive test, and there are guidelines for isolation now as well. Again, that guidance has changed from approximately 10 days down to five days, and in some cases in healthcare settings, even lesser. But again, I want to direct you directly to the CDC and/or county guidelines for the specific quarantine and isolation information with regard to the time that you should basically stay away from folks. There is a national shortage of home tests. I tried Friday. Literally every pharmacy in the county did not have rapid tests for COVID. There were some that were available online, but again, if you go to the CDC website, there are several brands that are not good products, and you should avoid those. That changes, so again, I want to direct you to the website to look there. Before you purchase a test, go to www.cdc.gov and look at the recommended test kits that you can purchase over the counter. There's also a national mandate for insurance payment. You can submit the claim directly to your insurance if you're insured, and it must be paid by the insurance company, and the guidance for that varies from one insurance company to the other. There are a number of pop-up testing sites in the county that move around. Again, that's available on readyslow.org. If you're wondering where you can go for a county test, check their website out. There are also a large number of vaccination clinics available in the county for various age groups, and they are sequestered by age. And again, they do change from week to week, so I'll direct you to readyslow.org vaccination to get information on vaccines. The bottom line is, unfortunately, we are not out of this pandemic. We're at an all-time high, significantly higher than the surge that we saw in January of 2021. It's a time to be compliant with the county and the CDC guidelines for quarantine isolation, for wearing face masks. And again, the mandate for our county is anywhere indoor in a public place, masks are required. And I just wish you all the best, and we will continue as a council to meet via Zoom. We'd love to be with you live, but unfortunately, due to this surge, we're not going to be able to do that. Again, readyslow.org for any local information, and the CDC website is www.cdc.gov. Thank you, and I'll go to Councilmember Heller. Do you have any announcements, sir?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank you again for your medical expertise and your leadership in this time of fluctuating COVID issues. We're very fortunate to have you on board with your background. Very, very helpful. I always look forward to hearing what you have to say. Secondly, I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year in spite of the medical issues that are going on. I'm very optimistic about the city and the progress we're going to be making in this coming year, and I want to thank staff for their very hard work last year, and I'm looking forward to moving forward and working with staff and the public going forward. For those of you who have questions about specific issues facing the city, I encourage you to email, text, or call me. I'm happy to talk and meet with just about anybody and talk about any issue. So it's 805-471-1257. It's 471-1257. Please send me a text or an email if you'd like to meet. And those are my announcements for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller, for those remarks. I appreciate it. Councilmember Barton, please.
Sorry, I was muted. I am thrilled to see Barbara with us tonight so that we are able to give her a happy send-off and thank you from the City of Morro Bay. So that's what I have.
Great. Thank you so much for that. And Councilmember Addis, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of announcements based on what you said about the COVID surge. The Women's March has been postponed to March 5th. Right about in there, close to International Women's Day, so we hope that-- One second, Eric. Okay. So Women's March has been postponed, and then the other announcement is that school is back in, so our local elementaries, middle, and high schools are back in and dealing with the COVID surge as well. So as considerate as all of us can be when it comes to traffic and being on the highway and looking out for kids that are walking to school, I know that would be appreciated by the families and teachers and school staff out there. And that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. And Councilmember Ford, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and Happy New Year to everyone. I have one quick announcement, since it seems like most of our events have been canceled or postponed, so I don't have any information on that tonight, but the County of San Luis Obispo is looking for volunteers for a point-in-time, which is the PIT count on January 26th. And if you're wondering what is that, the PIT count is a count of sheltered and unsheltered people experiencing homelessness on a single night in January. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requires continuum of cares to conduct a PIT count at least every two years during the last 10 days of January, and each count is planned, coordinated, and carried out locally. So if you're interested in participating in the count and to help our county out, the website is really long, so I will spare you that, but if you have any questions, you're interested in joining this volunteer effort, you can email this address, which is much shorter. It's s-s underscore homeless services at c-o.s-l-o.ca.us. Again, I'll say it one more time. S, as in Sam, s-s, two s's, underscore homeless services at c-o.s-l-o.ca.us if you're interested in participating in that county effort. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
And thank you for that. Mr. Collins, our city manager, any announcements?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Along the lines of what's been discussed earlier, just, I think it's out in the news at least, that the Morro Bay Bird Festival, which was scheduled for this upcoming weekend, had to be at least in-person canceled, which is really unfortunate. They couldn't do it last year as well, and this is a major mainstay event for our community. Obviously, being a bird community, it's very important to our locals but also our visitors. I did note on their webpage, if you go to Morro Bay Bird Festival, just Google that. It's the first hit back. They are doing a free virtual festival and certainly looking for donations as they had to refund $100,000, and folks paying to come see that, so they had to refund the entire amount, will be doing so. So anything that people can do to help out of it would be greatly appreciated. And I also just wanted to shout out to our community member, Carol Truesdale, who's been phenomenal in sharing information related to pandemic and other issues in the city, just sharing that on other sites like Nextdoor and helps get the information out to our community. But she also did flag some new law related to traffic safety that is actually quite helpful and will allow us to continue to address some speeding issues in our artillery, which we weren't able to do otherwise, so I just wanted to say thank you for pointing that out, and we're able to make some improvements based on that information. That's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Appreciate that. That brings us to presentations. This is a difficult one for me, a little mixed emotion with this. This is, if we promoted Barbara Spagnola-- Barbara, I do see you there. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Welcome to you and Chuck.
Thank you.
I have, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation first. This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay expressing appreciation for the dedication and public service of Barbara Spagnola. And it reads, "Whereas the City of Morro Bay is blessed to have residents who generously offer their time and talents in support of city operations, activities, and events, and whereas Barbara Spagnola served on the Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Council from 2014 to 2019, and along with her colleagues spent many hours reviewing potential locations and technologies, forming recommendations for the city council on the Critical Wastewater and Water Project, and whereas Ms. Spagnola served on the Citizens' Oversight and Finance Advisory Committee from 2007 to present, reviewing the city's Measure Q tax revenues and expenditures, and as the committee chair led the effort to provide very detailed budget and annual financial reporting documents in the Condensed and User-Friendly Budget Overview Document. And whereas Ms. Spagnola was a key voice on the Blue Ribbon Committee for the Water Reclamation Facility project in 2018, and along with her colleagues reviewed different funding strategies and opportunities to limit the proposed project costs. And whereas Ms. Spagnola has served on numerous hiring panels for the city, provided community insight on candidates and helped to select the best candidates for key positions such as police chief. And whereas Ms. Spagnola has served a variety of organizations, including the American Association of University Women, an organization that advocates for equal opportunities in education and economic security for women in the workplace, providing scholarships for local students to attend the Tech Trek Program, a week-long camp designed to introduce middle-school girls to STEM subjects and careers. And whereas Ms. Spagnola's professional career and expertise was a senior contracts manager for a global asset management organization. And whereas Ms. Spagnola's husband Chuck served as Morro Bay's representatives to the San Luis Obispo Citizens Transportation Advisory Council from 2017 to 2021. And whereas, in recognition of these many, many contributions, we would like to wish Ms. Spagnola and Chuck a fond farewell as they move to Southern California to be closer to their grandchildren. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Morro Bay City Council does hereby thank Barbara Spagnola for her dedicated service to the City of Morro Bay and the community, and offers its best wishes for many years filled with happiness in your new home." And Barbara and Chuck, I can tell you from the heart how grateful we are as a city. To you, Barbara and Chuck, for your service at the county level. Barbara exemplifies the spirit of volunteerism. For a number of years, I have had the pleasure of working closely with Barbara on a number of the issues and subcommittees that she has worked on and with, and I have grown to be very fond, but also I have a great admiration for her skill set, her abilities, and her communication style. And Barbara is one of the most collaborative, kind people that I know, and I will tell you that it's a great joy to go and be with your grandchildren, and for that, we are excited for you, but it is also a great loss on the part of the City of Morro Bay to see you move on. So Barbara, I just want to say thank you so much from the bottom of my heart for all of your service, the many, many hours that you and Chuck have spent volunteering for so many things, and you are going to be greatly missed. So Barbara, I'm turning the mic over to you.
Thank you, John. You're quite welcome, and thank you all for this recognition and the agenda write-up. It was truly an honor and a pleasure to serve the city, and also, it's really been a team effort, starting with the council leadership, the city staff, the city leadership, outside suppliers, and all our advisory board members. It's really been a team effort, and I appreciate this recognition, and there's plenty others that deserve it, that have worked as hard as I have. It's really been a wonderful experience. I've met a lot of, I'm glad I was able to contribute. I've met a lot of good, hard-working people on the advisory boards and learned a lot. And I do agree, Morro Bay is very fortunate and blessed to have so many volunteer opportunities, not only on the advisory boards, but several of our organizations that really help beautify the city and contribute in a way. It really makes it a great place to live and raise a family. And I would like to encourage all my fellow citizens to consider applying or serving on these advisory boards, and especially the younger generation. I think you will learn a lot. You'll do things that will help you in your career, and many of us contribute in ways that we maybe didn't think of when we joined these groups. There's a lot of expertise that's needed. It's been, as John said, very collaborative, and we haven't, all of us haven't always agreed, but we've had some real stimulating discussion and coming to conclusions and recommendations that hopefully have helped the city. So I really appreciate that. It's with, and I appreciate all the work that everybody on our council and staff does for the city, and it's with heavy heart. We have to say goodbye, but it's been a wonderful experience, and we wish you all the best. Anything.
Thank you. Thank you both again, and you'll be greatly missed. We wish you the best. Just love on those grandkids and enjoy the time with them that you're going to have.
And if you need to reach out to me for my unbiased opinion, I'll be glad to give you the elevator speech on anything. So thank you, and 10-4.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Okay, that brings us to presentation of our stormwater award for Tideland's Pocket Park, and I believe I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Qualick, our Public Works Director. Is that correct, Mr. Collins?
That's correct, and thank you, Mayor. We're really excited. We received a Small Project of the Year Award from the American Society of Civil Engineers for our Tideland's Park, Pocket Park project, that involved an interesting and unique stormwater component. And this project was performed from start to finish by Damaris Hansen. Damaris is, as you all know, one of our rising stars in the department, has been here for a few years and has taken on some additional roles, and she can give you the full presentation on the park. I'm going to pull up this slide. Where is this button here? Okay, Damaris, it's all yours.
Welcome, Damaris.
Damaris, I think you're muted, sorry.
Sorry about that. I was. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, and Greg, thank you for the introduction. In 2019, the city partnered with the Local Government Commission. We received a grant from the National Recreation and Parks Association. The city was chosen to receive a portion of the Local Government Commission's grant, and we received $57,000 to build a small pocket park with a stormwater feature. The park is located on the Embarcadero, and it takes runoff from the boat Rensoff area near Tideland's Park. It treats this water prior to entering the bay. The park also treats stormwater pollutants from cars and pets and other sources during small storm events. The stormwater is captured into the low-depression area and is filtered through a special soil mix before entering an underground pipe and then being released out into the bay. Previously, this runoff would just go directly untreated into the bay. So tonight, I am happy to present that the Tideland Stormwater Pocket Park was awarded Small Project of the Year from the American Society of Civil Engineers for both San Luis Obispo and Los Angeles County. I'm personally excited for this project to be acknowledged because it was a great project to work on. Construction of this project was a great community effort. We had community members that helped with the design of this project, also helped plant the plants. City maintenance staff helped build the basin, while utility staff helped relocate a waterline. And if you haven't already visited this pocket park, I highly suggest visiting it during sunset. I personally think it provides one of the better sunset viewing spots on the Embarcadero. And I would also like to send a special thank you to Darla Elswich and Tom Martin with Rick Engineering. If it wasn't for Darla's assistance with the grant and Tom's help with engineering and design of the project, this project would never be the success that it is. So thank you for your time this evening, and I just wanted to hope that everyone has some time to visit this great little addition to the Embarcadero. Thank you.
Hey, Damaris, thank you so much for this great award, Small Project of the Year. Appreciate all the work that you've put into it. What a great project, and I agree, one of the best places to be at sunset in Morro Bay. And Greg, thank you also for your leadership. We appreciate that, and please extend our thanks to anybody else that was involved in the project from the council as well.
I certainly will. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, thanks for that. That brings us to public comment. This is general public comment for items on the agenda for which you cannot stand would like to speak now, or for any general issues you'd like to raise with the city. Public comment is now open. And Highland, do we have public comments, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First up, we have Betty Winholtz. Betty, you've been allowed to talk.
Welcome, Betty.
Good evening. This is Betty Winholtz. Just two items I'd like to address. The first one is a question, and it's, "When will the interpretation by the city attorney be given for reopening public comment to be published on the city website, when the agendas are, for city council meetings and other Brown Act boards?" And then my second topic is a comment about, a comment that was made by staff in terms of one of my comments, if we can keep all those comments in order. At the last meeting, I commented on the council meeting in closed session regarding items that haven't been presented in public session, so the public doesn't know why council will be considering a particular item. In restating my words, the interpretation was that I was accusing council of making decisions in closed session. That is not what I said. My message was, for example, if council is considering selling the teen center, that should be made known in the general meeting, so you can receive input from the residents on whether they want that to happen or not. After it all is a public facility. Then, if the public is agreeable, the council would go into closed session to discuss price and terms. What appears to happen is that council discusses an item in closed session, and then it may appear later on the general public meeting. So I wanted to clarify that my intent was not accusational. It was descriptive in terms it seems like the order was backwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Highland, next public comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no more raised hands in the queue.
Okay, I will close public comment, general public comment, bring it back to council. Chris, do you have an update regarding Betty's question on the public comment period interpretation on the issue?
Yes, good evening, Mayor. So I've been working with city manager and the city clerk on a policy, and I believe-- So I've been working with city manager and the city clerk on a policy, and I believe that the intent is to have it in place for the next council meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. This is item A, including items A1 through A9. And I'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for any items that are on the consent agenda only. And public comment is now opened. Highland, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Betty Winholtz again for public comment. Betty, you have been unmuted.
Welcome, Betty.
Thank you. This is Betty Winholtz again. I am referring to consent item A4. Late this, or early this afternoon, sorry for the lateness, I sent council a list of how many of their members were assigned to different committees, some of them county and some of them city subcommittees. This issue arose before, and it seems to me that the equity or balance of some members getting more than other appointments needs to kind of be evened out. There are 15 appointments at the county level, which would average out to three per person. As an example of extreme, Mrs. Addis has four and Mr. Heller has one. So I'm wondering if, and that administration, which was interesting, actually has two spots, which have formerly been set on by council members. So I'm just concerned that this be balanced out in terms of our representation at the county level. And there is a more extreme comparison at the subcommittee level. There are 16 appointments at this level excluding to the boards, but these have to do with the subcommittees. And Ms. Addis has five appointments, Ms. Barton has one, Ms. Ford has two, Mr. Heading has six, and Mr. Heller has two. So two-thirds of the assignments have gone to Ms. Addis and Mr. Heading, and it seems that's pretty dominating. And I understand that that's at the discretion of the mayor, but I would hope that he would see that there needs to be balance and equitable voices in all our representation. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Highland, next public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no more raised hands in the queue.
Okay, thanks. I'll close public comment, bring it back, and either entertain a motion, or if there's an item you want to pull from the consent agenda, Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item A5 regarding the special election on June 7th, so that I can recuse myself.
Okay, we'll take a separate vote on that item. Councilmember Addis.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull A9, just so I can make a couple of comments about Barbara Spagnuolo's service to the city.
Thank you, I got that, okay. Seeing no other hands, I'll entertain a motion to approve A1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, and 8.
I'll move to approve A1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, and 8.
Okay, there's a second.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Addis, seconded by Councilmember Heller to approve A1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, and 8. Any further discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Councilmember Barton is our new mayor pro temp?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
And pulling A5, Councilmember Ford is recusing herself from this. Did you have anything else to say, Councilmember Ford?
No, just that it directly affects me, so I don't feel that I should be voting on it. Thank you.
All right, so unless there's any other discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve A5.
I'll move to approve A5.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Addis, seconded by Councilmember Heller to approve A5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote on that one.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
And Councilmember Ford has abstained. Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0-1.
And A9, Councilmember Addis, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say a couple of words, and I saw Councilmember Heller's hand up at that time as well, that I really believe...
My apologies.
What's that?
My apologies if I missed your hands, sorry.
Oh, no, no, it's okay, but just to commend Ms. Spagnuolo for her service to the city, but also to say that it was an honor to serve with Barbara on the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, that I consider her to be a mentor and a friend, and echo many of the comments that you made yourself, Mayor, that she is smart, kind, thoughtful, giving, and has been such a leader and an example for our community. And while I am so sad to see her go from our community, I think it's a wonderful way to begin 2022, to be able to honor her and the service that she's given and the example that she is. And I think she is one of a kind, but we are also blessed to have many people like her who serve our city. And so it's a wonderful way to start the new year.
Thank you, Non, much appreciated.
Can I chime in here, Mayor?
Oh, I was muted, sorry. I see your hand.
Barbara, I'd like to thank you for all your years and looking at what you've contributed to the city. I only knew about half of it, so you've been helping this city for many, many years in great, important roles in a very modest, humble fashion. And you do set an example, just an amazing volunteer, and I appreciate your suggestion that other people step up. We need people to fill these advisory councils and committees. And I've been a little disappointed that more people haven't applied. It's a great opportunity to help your community and meet other people and learn things, and you're a wonderful example of that. So I want to wish you and Chuck a great transition to Southern California and your life with your grandkids. Very much appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember Ford, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to say a quick thank you to Barbara and Chuck as well, and wish you the best in your future. And I thank you so much for all the hard work you've put into our community and the service that you've provided and the great example that you've set forth for future volunteers and current volunteers. But I just, your list is impressive of all the things that you've been involved with. And I've only had the opportunity to work with you once on one of the committees, and I just, I had no idea the amount of work that you have done for the city. And so for that, I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you, and our city is better for it, so that's it.
You're welcome, you're welcome, Jeff and Jen. And yes, I do strongly believe in bringing a diverse perspective and getting younger people involved, so I'm recruiting the best I can. So thank you all again.
Thank you, Barbara. Councilmember Barton, yes.
Oh, I'm so glad that Barbara could be with us tonight. I met her at AAUW before I was living here full-time and before I went on to council, and I was just blown away by who is that woman? She's so bright and speaks so well, and had to get to know her. So anyway, I'm just so tickled, and I'm going to miss you.
Thank you. Barbara, I think I would just keep a house here and maybe a part-time presence in the community, I don't know.
Well, we do plan to come back a couple times for some appointments and other business, so you may run into me.
I hope we do. Thanks again. And Councilmember Addis, would you like to make the motion?
I would like to make the motion to approve A9.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Addis, seconded by Councilmember Heller to approve A9. Any further discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Absolutely, yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you again for that. That brings us to item C, our business items. The first item tonight is item C1. This is the discussion and of and consideration for actions to address our pension liabilities and other post-employment benefit unfunded liabilities. This is and has been one of our major city goals, so I appreciate the opportunity to see what staff has in store for us. And I believe I'm going to turn it over to our esteemed Assistant City Manager, Ms. Sarah. Are you with us, Sarah? Sarah Rios?
I am.
There you are.
I am here. Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. And I'll just provide a brief introduction and then kick this over to NHA Advisors, who's going to lead you through an in-depth presentation of the material. And as you mentioned, Mayor Heading, this is and has been a council goal, and most recently, this last fall, specifically council restated this action item as creating a plan to address the city's unfunded liabilities while striving to achieve competitive compensation. So this is our first step in that process, and I just want to clarify that tonight is a first step. Our intent tonight is to really provide an educational informational session about the city's unfunded liability, primarily the CalPERS unfunded liability, and then to provide information about various tools that the city could choose to use to address that unfunded liability. Depending on your direction tonight, staff would then follow up with a number of next steps to implement those tools, and those would include discussions through the budget process about the funding levels that you would like to move forward with to address the unfunded liability, and potentially an ongoing policy to address that. So those would all be future action items after we get some preliminary direction from you tonight. And I also want to remind council, as was indicated in the staff report, that this item did go to CFAC for their review and input in December. And we had a good discussion with CFAC, and a majority of the CFAC members concurred with staff's recommendations, which were moving forward to you this evening. And so with that, I would like to turn it over to Craig Hill. He's the Managing Principal with NHA Advisors, and he's going to tell you that they do this work for a number of cities, and we'll jump right in. Go ahead, Craig.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Pleasure being with you virtually tonight. Best of health to everybody in 2022. And as Sarah mentioned, we do this type of work, municipal advisory work throughout the state of California. We've done work for some of your neighbors, actually along this pension education line with the city of Paso Robles a couple of years ago, as is a sensitive issue for a lot of cities, given the outstanding liabilities. We are not a bank or a financial institution. We're a traditional financial advisor slash consultant to public agencies. That's our target objective. So we were working with staff earlier in 2021 on some of your cash flow for the wastewater project that is going on, and we've kind of migrated over to looking in and evaluating some of your pension liability work. So as Sarah mentioned, you know, tonight is really intended to be educational with some potential direction or recommendations at the end. We're happy to take questions as we go, if that will make it easier for you. Otherwise, we'll try to get through these slides as quick as possible so we can have a good dialogue. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Meyer. He's a Vice President with NHA Advisors and heads up our pension consulting group. Mike?
Thanks, Craig, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Mike Meyer with NHA Advisors. We have about 25 slides, and we obviously want to be sensitive to your time, so I'm going to jump right into it. As Sarah mentioned before, the presentation really focuses on the city's CalPERS unfunded liability, so historic, kind of how this debt developed with CalPERS over the last two decades, and then really looking at some of the more popular cost management strategies that are available for CalPERS members. The current UAL with CalPERS, this is your debt with CalPERS, is $29.3 million. It's been about a 51% increase over the last decade. That's a very common trend for any CalPERS member, just with CalPERS not meeting its investment objectives over the last 10 to 15 years. There is some good news. Obviously, the stock market did very well last year, so CalPERS did earn quite a bit above their target of 7%. They earned 21.3%, so that's going to bring down the UAL for all CalPERS members by almost a third. So we do expect that the city's unfunded liability will go down to close to $22 million. Should mention that the city does have a very small OPEB liability. From our conversations with staff, that looks to be somewhere between $0 and $1 million, so very, very small. Applaud the city for putting in money to attack that liability. That's definitely the lowest we've seen relative to your peers out there. So because of that, most of this presentation is going to be focused on the CalPERS pension liability, just because it's much larger than the OPEB. The city has taken proactive steps over the years in terms of building reserves to dedicate towards this challenge, prepaying the UAL annually. There is a discount that you get, and it's something that the city's been doing. And then in 2020, dedicating about half a million to actually pay more than was needed to CalPERS to kind of buy down that debt. As Craig mentioned, we are going to touch on a few of the more common cost management strategies in this presentation and some of the pros and cons. To start, we have a few slides, just a quick background on the city's retirement plans with CalPERS. There are two primary plans. There's the safety plan that covers fire and police employees. There's about 139 covered members. About 35 of those are actually active, so the vast majority are either retired or they've transferred to other agencies. And then there's the miscellaneous plan that covers all the non-safety members. That covers about 279 members, about 59 of those are active. As you may know, new employees are governed under the new PEPRA plan, so those are lower-cost, lower-benefit plans. So important to note that that $20 million unfunded liability that you have with CalPERS, it's all attributable to the old classic plans. It's not attributable to the new PEPRA plans. In terms of the payments that the city makes to CalPERS each year, there's really two components. There's what's called the normal cost. That is the annual payment to keep up with current employees. And then there is the payment on the unfunded accrued liability, and we'll refer to that as the UAL. And essentially, that is the difference between what CalPERS says you need to be fully funded, which is your actuarial liability, and that's shown in the bar on the right, that's $95 million, versus what you actually have in assets, which is $66 million. So there's a gap there. No fault of the city, this is because of CalPERS' underperformance and assumption changes over the last decade, but that gap is $29 million based on the latest reports. Obviously, it's a very large number. CalPERS doesn't require agencies to pay that back all at once. They amortize it like a loan or a mortgage over, you know, a period of 20 years at an interest rate of 7%. That interest rate's going down to 6.8% next year. So why do cities have unfunded liabilities right now? These, a UAL was really nonexistent back in the early 2000s and late 90s, mainly because the stock market was earning double-digit returns. So those earnings were more than adequate to cover retirement costs. However, over the last 20 years, CalPERS has averaged about 6.9% on their investment returns. That's quite a bit lower than the eight and a quarter they thought they were going to earn about 20 years ago. So sluggish investment returns. They also have ratcheted down their main assumption, which is called their discount rate. That's what they think they can earn with their money each year. They've ratcheted that down about six times over the last 15 years or so. It started at about eight and a quarter, and then just two months ago, it's come down to a 6.8%. So every time they adjust that target earnings rate lower, it means that your UAL goes up a little bit, because they don't expect that they'll cover the needed retirement benefits with just investment earnings. Other changes that have impacted costs are mortality rates, given that people are living longer. CalPERS also... CalPERS also made a change about five years ago that forces members to repay this debt over 20 years instead of 30. So very similar to a mortgage. If the term is shorter, your annual payment is a bit higher. So it's a little bit more of a challenge for, on a cash flow basis. So Slide 10, a quick graph of the payments that the city's been making on this unfunded liability. You can see back in 2014, 15, and 16, that number was about $1 million. This fiscal year, 2022, the city's already prepaid on that UAL. That's over $2 million. And based on the latest reports, these payments are going above $3 million by the end of the decade. And then they start to fall away as that, as that UAL debt gets paid off. So Slide 11 is probably the most, more up-to-date chart. We, the new reports from CalPERS aren't out yet that would incorporate the benefit of the really good year they had last year. But we did model this out just to show the city what we expect once CalPERS does incorporate those into the new reports that will be released this summer. So big picture, we do think your UAL debt with CalPERS will drop from 29 to about 22 million. And then the payments associated with that debt will also be lowered. So we charted that out in the blue line there. So instead of paying, instead of seeing pension costs rising to above 3 million, we think that will level out at somewhere between 2.2 and 2.5 million over the next decade or so before it starts to fall off pretty quickly after 2036. And just want to take, we'll probably say it again later, but just to take this opportunity to say this is a snapshot in time. It does assume that CalPERS actually meets its investment targets every year moving forward. We all know that's not going to happen. They're going to have some ups and downs. And so this shape will kind of move up and down in the future as they, as we get results of their investment performance. So if they miss their target, you would see these payments go a little bit higher. And, and CalPERS would add kind of a new 20-year layer on these payments. And if they have another good year, like they did last year, you'll actually see it continue to be reduced. So something that gets updated every year. Last page on projections, we wanted to look at kind of all-in, how this is impacting the city's budget. So we did want to model out the normal costs, which are shown in the dark blue. They don't fluctuate as much as the UAL. And then the UAL is on top with the light blue bars. So really big takeaway here is that the city all-in is paying, projected to pay CalPERS about 3.5 million per year for the next 15 years or so for both UAL and normal cost. So getting to the next section, this section, we go into quite a bit of detail on a few of the more popular cost management strategies. So I won't spend too much time on 14, but just to briefly summarize, the first option is something the city already does. It's to prepay the UAL first thing in July instead of doing monthly installments. So CalPERS does give you a nice discount for doing that. The second strategy that some employers have looked at is negotiations with employees to change the cost sharing formulas. The third option, which I would say is probably the least popular on this list, and we'll get into some of the reasons why, is a fresh start amortization with CalPERS. It's, it's essentially requesting a new repayment shape that's more smooth. The problem with that is that it is, it does require higher payments in the near term, and it, it is locked in. So there's no flexibility to go back to your old payments. The option that we see the most of is number four, which is essentially paying more to, to really get ahead of this and pay more debt down quicker. And there's, whether you're using reserves or annual surplus, there's, there's really two primary vehicles. The first of which is a, to create a separate trust. It's called a Section 115 trust. CalPERS offers one. There's also several organizations that offer these 115 trusts, essentially a way to take some of your reserves that are currently restricted in what you can invest in and earn a bit more on that money. Once those funds are put into a 115, they must be used for pension or OPEB expenses. The second, and we'll get into a little bit more detail on that, that vehicle. The second option is, is really to send money to CalPERS and pay down some of that debt. And that's something that the city did in 2020, when it took about $500,000 and paid down some of that unfunded liability. And then the last concept that has been fairly popular in the last 18 months or so, just given where interest rates are, are to issue a bond to pay off that UAL. That is a concept that's pretty complex in the finance world and does carry quite a bit of risk. So we did put some slides into the appendix if there are questions on this concept. But we won't be focusing too heavily on the restructuring, the UAL with a pension bond concept. So in terms of the, the fresh start, as I mentioned, this is something that CalPERS has always offered. It used to be that you could actually request any sort of term you wanted. So it could be 30 years, it could be 25. It really depended on what type of annual payment worked best for you. CalPERS changed that a few years back to, to basically force members to shorten the term of the payment. So we, we charted that out here in the orange line just to show what your repayment shape would look like if you would, if you execute a fresh start on that 20, 22 million of debt. You can see that the payments are a little bit higher in the early years, but you do pay off that debt early in 2037 or so. As I mentioned before, the, the main reason that this is not commonly utilized is really the lack of flexibility. So once you do a fresh start with CalPERS, you can't, you can't go back and say, hey, these payments are too high. We want to go back to our old schedule. So really, the options we're about to get into, the 115 and the ADP to CalPERS, is really to effectuate the same thing, which is to pay down your debt quicker while still maintaining some flexibility. So as I mentioned before, the 115 trust is a separate trust. It's managed by a third party. The big benefit here, relative to your current reserves, which are restricted by the government code in terms of what you can invest in, is that it, it opens the door for more investment opportunities with that money. So once you put it in a 115 trust, you work with that, that firm, work with their investment advisor to determine what type of investment vehicle makes sense for the city. You know, is it a conservative portfolio? Or is it a more aggressive portfolio or anything in between? So there's a lot more options with a 115 trust than just sending CalPERS that money. The big benefit we hear from our clients with the 115 trust is really flexibility. So once that money's in the fund, you can use it in a lot of different ways. The city may have a challenging budget year down the road. You could actually use those funds in the 115 trust just to make your annual contribution to CalPERS. If, if, let's say you found it difficult to find that money in the general fund. You could also just let that money grow. And at some point, you'll have enough in there to just fully extinguish the debt, the UAL debt with CalPERS. So there is some flexibility there in, in terms of mitigating, you know, budgetary volatility. The ADP is the option where you would actually send money directly to CalPERS. You would tell CalPERS which component of the UAL you want to pay off. And then you would get credit based on whatever discount rate they're using at that time. So it is currently 7%, but it will be going to 6.8%. So the benefit here is you are directly reducing this debt. You are bringing down your payments slightly. I would say the downside with this is that once you send that money to CalPERS, it's gone. So it's unlike a 115 trust, there wouldn't be any sort of additional money to tap into, let's say, if the city ran into a more difficult budgetary year. Quick comparison before the, between the two options. I think I hit most of these. Big difference, I think, is shown in the third row. You do have more control of your investment strategy with the 115 trust. Obviously, if you send that money to CalPERS, it goes in with the rest of your 66 million that you have with CalPERS and gets invested pretty aggressively. One of the benefits with the 115 trust is council and staff have full control over how you invest that money based on your risk tolerance. Lots of different types of portfolios there. The bottom row, interesting stat, I think this is a little bit, little bit old, but just meant to show that these are popular options being used by other members. We estimate there's over 300 or 400 agencies using 115 trusts in the state in about the same amount that did ADPs in 2020. So very common strategies around the state. Next two slides, just to really conceptually show the potential benefit of both the 115 and the ADPs to CalPERS. We did assume that the city makes an initial contribution to the trust out of reserves of about a million, and then attempts to budget about half a million each year moving forward to, to put into that trust. And again, that's not, this isn't part of the recommendation. It's just those are numbers we use. Looking at the city's budget, it seemed like fairly feasible that the city might be able to set aside these amounts. And what this chart shows here in the blue bars is the UAL debt that you have with CalPERS, the balance going down over time, which is naturally going to happen because you're paying down that debt each year. And you can see that that goes all the way out to 2045. What's, what we charted in the orange line is the potential growth in this new 115 trust. And to show really that in 2034, we would project that you'd have enough in that trust to fully extinguish your UAL with CalPERS. So essentially paying that debt off about 10 to 12 years earlier than currently scheduled for. And very, very similarly, the ADP, a different mechanism to get to a very similar place. So if you were to just say, let's take that million in the first year and a half a million every year moving forward and send that to CalPERS, then you would actually pay down that debt more quickly than you're currently scheduled for. And again, we, we project that you would fully pay it off in about 2033 and then be done with your UAL. And of course, this assumes that, again, it's a snapshot. We know that UAL might get added in in the future when CalPERS has below-average years. We did include three very high-level slides on the concept of restructuring the UAL using a bond. We put a lot more, I would say, detail-heavy slides on this concept in the appendix if there are questions. But at a high level, it is where an agency issues a bond and then takes that money that you raise and you send it to CalPERS to pay off your UAL debt. So essentially converting the high-interest rate debt with CalPERS to lower-interest rate debt on the bond. So there's been about 80 agencies over the last year and a half that have issued pension bonds, and the interest rates have ranged from about 2.5% to 4%. So interest rate, the lowering of the interest rate is, is one of the primary factors. And two, the ability to reshape those payments in a way that's more predictable, smoother, and at a lower level has been a second reason why some agencies have looked at this vehicle. There is considerable risk with this option because the savings, unlike doing a refinancing on a home where you're kind of, you know what your savings is, your savings isn't guaranteed because it's dependent on future CalPERS returns. And so the rule of thumb really is that a, an agency is better off having done the bond if CalPERS earns above the bond rate. So let's say you borrowed at 3.5% on the bond. You'd be better off so long as CalPERS earns above that. However, if they were to earn lower than that, or if, let's say, there was a big recession right after you, you gave them a big chunk of money, you could actually be worse off having done the bond financing. So because of this, there would be a, if this is ever a concept that the city wanted to look into further, we always recommend that there's some sort of risk assessment process that goes along with this because it is a very, probably one of the more complex types of financing instruments out there in public finance. Slide 23 here, just really conceptually to show what a restructuring could look like. We showed three different terms, kind of like three different mortgage options, a short 15-year, all the way out to a longer 24-year, just to show what the new payments could look like relative to what you're scheduled to pay to CalPERS, which are in the blue bars. So you can see the goal there is really to bring down the payments and smooth them out. So just to wrap it up on, on 25 and 26, before I turn it over to Sarah. I think I mentioned earlier, this is a, a subject that we are talking to cities around the state weekly about. It, tomorrow Bay is not in a unique situation. This is a challenge that has been facing all public agencies. And so I think very important to be taking a lot of these numbers, filling it into the city's budget, its longer-term forecast. There's a lot of tools out there. Free Outlook tool that CalPERS has put out now that really allows cities to do a lot of sensitivity analysis too, so that you can be very conservative with some of your estimates because we know that there is risk for, you know, CalPERS to underperform at some point or perhaps another recession. So we highly encourage that as part of the planning process. We know that the city has been doing well financially and that you built reserves. So we applaud you for that. I think that from our perspective, the option of the 115 trust or paying down that, some of that UAL, using an ADP with CalPERS are both very prudent as well as feasible, given the city's financial situation. I think when we look at the city's primary revenue streams being TOT and sales tax, you have a little bit more volatility than, let's say, some of our clients that are more property tax-based. So I think when we look at the 115 versus the ADP, the ADP, the flexibility that the 115 provides, we think does help mitigate both revenue volatility and CalPERS volatility. And so between the two, that may be something the city wants to look at. I think one, one note we put there is that for most of our clients, a cost management strategy is not only one thing. It's, it's sometimes it's multi-pronged. So I think just important to note that the city could look at all of these, one of these, or none of these. If you start a 115 trust at any time, you could still take that money and, and spend it to CalPERS and do an ADP. You could still do a fresh start. You could still do a pension bond. So it doesn't really preclude you from executing any other strategies now or, or in the future. Last bullet, just something that I think we wanted to share with the city is that a lot of cities around the state have been adopting pension funding policies. So in the past, you know, the reserve policy has been really the key policy document. But given how quickly pension costs have risen and the level of debt, lots of agencies are putting into place policies that really provide some framework as to how the city will continue to address this liability in the future. And so that is something the city may want to consider down the road. I know we've shared some various samples with staff and happy to talk about that in more detail if, if needed. Before I hand it off to Sarah, you know, the 115 trust, as we mentioned, if the city does want to look into that option, it is, you know, a two- to three-month process based on what we've seen with some of our other clients. So there are many providers out there. So we would encourage staff and to, you know, sit down with each one of them, talk to them about portfolio options, fees, get a sense of customer service. This is somebody that you will be working with, you know, for, for a long time in the future. Formal city council adoption of, of the necessary documents would be needed. So after staff sat down with various agencies and made a decision on the best provider, they would then sit down with an investment advisor, figure out what type of portfolio or maybe different portfolios make sense. Maybe it's both pension and OPEB. There are some cost efficiencies there that we have seen with other clients. There are some cost efficiencies there that we have seen with other clients and just kind of helps that whole notion of flexibility there. And then once all those documents are approved, then the trust is actually established and then the city would, you know, determine whether it wants to fund it at that time or just, you know, set it up. So several steps involved here if, if council gave the green light to continue pursuing this option. So I'm going to flip it to 27. Sarah, if I missed anything, let me know, but I think this is probably the best point to turn it back to you.
Sure, thanks, Mike. No, I think that was a great in-depth and educational overview, so thank you. And I'll just speak to the multi-pronged staff recommendation, that's before the council tonight. First and foremost, just we wanted you, like I said, to receive this information and provide any feedback and of course, ask any questions while we have Craig and Mike with us this evening. And then based on the unfunded liability that the city continues to face, first and foremost, we would recommend establishing what we're calling a pension reserve. And then there are various vehicles by which we could fund that. We would come back during the budget process with a recommendation on how much to potentially fund that. That would of course be a council decision at that time. And then we could look at a policy going forward, perhaps tying that into the existing reserve policies. And we've got some preliminary thoughts about that, but tonight we would just like, as a first step, to establish that pension reserve. Next, our recommendation based on all the pros and cons for the various tools that Mike has presented to you tonight is to proceed with a Section 115 trust and to establish that as the vehicle currently for the pension reserve. As Mike mentioned, that doesn't preclude the city from taking any of the other actions later or using any other tools in addition to. But we think that this is really our most prudent first step, given the additional investment returns that, that opens up the city to, as well as the flexibility to utilize those funds for CalPERS' normal costs in a downturn. That would be wrapped into the pension reserve policy that we bring forward. And then finally, we do have our existing OPEB trust fund that the city established back in 2013. And we've connected some dots this year, made some updates to the actuarial report, and we're in really good shape with the OPEB funding. So if, depending on council's directions on the other items, we would potentially either leave those funds there in that restricted trust or evaluate putting them with the same organization that we go with for a CalPERS 115 trust. The alternatives you see are listed below, they're basically taking no action or taking, using one of the other policy tools that Mike outlined. And with that, we're available for any questions.
Sarah, thank you, very much appreciated. Thank you, Craig, for the introduction. And Mike, thanks for your comprehensive presentation. I'll wait for you to turn off your screen so we can get a full look at. There we go. Thank you very much. We're going to go to, to council questions. And I had the opportunity to basically see your presentation at the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee and to hear a number of questions that they had. So many of the questions I had were answered at that time and I appreciate that. Also, your report is very comprehensive and easy to understand, so that for me answers a lot of questions. I keep trying to understand, here's my question, that first question, I guess, maybe for Mike. Given, I mean, I hear continuously in your presentations the concerns about the POBs. And looking at CalPERS 5, 10, 20 and 30-year return rates, they're not bad. I mean, you know, personally, individually, you know, individuals could do better, but, but that's a pretty good rate. And so if you could go out and do a POB at three and a half percent and you've got a 30-year corridor averaging 8.4% return, why are they so bad? And the fundamental risk might be CalPERS returns being lower than the POB rate.
No, it's a, it's a great question. And I think to go on record, NHA is not for or against pension bonds. We have done about 20 of these in the last 18 months and we're pretty active in that market. To your point, the reason a lot of agencies have looked at it in the last 18 months specifically, because there actually wasn't a POB market for the last decade. And then all of a sudden, there was a lot of investors that would not buy pension bonds because of the bankruptcies from Stockton, San Bernardino. All of a sudden, the market came back and I think people are looking at the risk reward calculation. And when rates are at two and a half to three and a half, the odds of CalPERS doing above that is quite a bit higher, right? So the risk reward calculation changed. I think if rates were at five or six percent, you would not see people doing pension bonds. There are other nuances. You are giving CalPERS a big chunk of money at one point in time that gets invested. And so there's a lot of market timing risk. So for folks who did the POBs last year and then CalPERS earned 21.3%, they're sitting pretty well right now. There's a lot of overfunded agencies. It could work the other way. If we have an O8, you know, you're going to get hit with more UAL any, either way, if you do a bond or not. But if you were to do a bond, you would get hit with quite a bit more UAL and that actually might wipe away the savings. So to your point, we recommend, it's a deeper process because that risk is something that we like to put on the table. So to actually come up with some of the what-if scenarios, what if there's another O8, what if CalPERS only earns four and a half percent, you know, what does, what do your new payments look like? And so it's, it's a bit more complex there.
Yeah, so the 10-year's gone up in the last few weeks, we know that. Do you know what the current POB rate is? And I'm sorry, I didn't check it today, but I just out of curiosity.
Yeah, so December, there was a couple deals, a couple, we were on low three percents, a couple sub-three percent. There was a big run-up in the last couple of weeks in rates. There's a couple POBs pricing this week, we are thinking in the low, low to mid-three percents, so you know, three and a quarter to 350. You know, POB, I think we were in the market with one of the first POBs in '20 with the city of Riverside. Rates were still at around 4%, high threes, and it wasn't until, you know, COVID hit and Treasury rates came down that the rates dipped into the low threes. Now we're seeing kind of an uptick again, just given that the Fed is expected to raise rates a few times this year. So we will see if that trend continues or if it kind of stabilizes here in the mid-threes.
And what's, what's the, is the term 30 years? Or can it be varied?
It could be anything, it could be anything. And actually, from our standpoint, I would say that's probably the bigger reason you would look at it, because there's, there's flex there. You can, you did, if you look at all 80 of the pension bonds done, everybody has a different strategy with term repayment shape, you know, what, what levels work best. So there's a little bit of, a lot of tailoring involved, and that is one of the benefits to that option.
And, and I would assume a number of cities do a piece of their UAL? Or, or some of them do, do all of the UAL? Or how does that?
Yeah, I would say 90% of folks have done a portion. So, you know, somewhere in that 50% to 80% range, a few have gone 100%. The risk there is that if you get overfunded, you know, it's still your money, but you're not getting that, CalPERS isn't sending you a check that year. And it sits around and it can be used in the future to absorb new, new UAL. But I would say for the most part, that two-thirds range is pretty common. So really to bring the funding ratios up to the low, low to mid-90 percentile.
And in your experience, do a majority or most cities do a potpourri of different vehicles, you know, maybe a 115 trust with perhaps a portion in POBs and then some, you know, payments, you know, side payments, et cetera?
Yeah, so for all of the pension bonds we've worked on in the last year, they've all put into place a 115 trust. Not, not any other ADPs because in a way, the pension bond is, it's a huge ADP to CalPERS.
Exactly.
The reason the 115 trust we always recommend is because you do want some sort of buffer there to absorb any future shocks and you are taking on a little bit more risk with the pension bond. So almost even more important to have money set aside if there is some sort of future UAL that comes online.
And again, just to, I think I understood you to say, one of the biggest advantages of the 115 trust is flexibility?
Relative to just money to CalPERS, yeah.
Okay. And this may be a question for Sarah and/or Mike and/or Craig in your experience, but from the standpoint of risk corridors on a 115 trust, it's my understanding that the city has the ability to invest in what I'll call, I don't know if this is a good term, but higher risk or higher rate of return instruments. And how do you see those decisions being made mainly by cities? Is it staff? Is it through subcommittees of the city council? Is it through the advisor? Just out of curiosity, your experience.
Craig, do you want to take this one?
Yeah, that's actually a really good question. We've had a number of conversations going back probably five years with councils regarding, you know, where their risk tolerance is. So you're kind of solving more for a, a policy than you are the math or the actual return. And as an example, we have agencies where their councils have no trust in CalPERS, right? They, they believe that their investment strategies are completely sideways and whether, you know, of course, this is before they did 21%, but there's this, there's this distrust with Sacramento. And so their, their need or willingness to do a 115 is to gain control. And it isn't about necessarily beating the CalPERS return, it's about reliance on a much more potentially conservative return. Like, you know what, we would be fine earning 5% every year, right? We just don't want to have the negatives, right? So it's, it's a risk tolerance question that doesn't have to do with actually beating anybody or necessarily swinging for the fences as much as it is, we want to kind of control our destiny. So when we think about a 115 and the investment options, a lot of it is more around getting you into the, to the tolerance, the risk tolerance that you're comfortable as a community or as a council with, rather than, oh, well, we, we just want to invest in something that's going to earn 10%. And I think just for everybody's clarification, really what the 115 is doing is allowing you to invest in longer term, longer maturities, government code, typical general fund, investment strategies, you know, the LEAF account that you have, those things are very liquid, right? It's a very short maturity, so you're not getting much of a return on that. Think about a 115, almost like your 401K program where I'm going to take a longer horizon and I'm willing to invest in a 10-year Treasury or an agency or something that isn't necessarily buying, you know, Ford corporate bonds, but rather just buying something that has a longer term.
And so, and so setting up a 115 trust, perhaps not advisable, this is a question, to dump a large cash amount in there in order to realize an annualized maybe contribution that would allow you to dollar-cost average? Is that, I mean, do some cities dump huge amounts in there all at once? Or is there, on average, a certain amount that's contributed and then per policy, perhaps a certain amount that's taken out of general operating overages or, or any kind of reserves that are accumulated and contributed annually there?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think from, I mean, the Section 115 trust deposits, because it's been coming from reserve levels, I mean, we haven't seen our clients put in massive amounts of money like you would see from a pension bond, right? So, you know, those are all things that once you have a provider onboard, you'd sit down with the investment advisor, talk about risk tolerance. I'd say 70% of the agencies out there are in some sort of moderate type of portfolio. We don't see a lot of agencies trying to aggressively invest to beat CalPERS. I would also say the very lowest risk, you know, all fixed income conservative, probably not the most popular either, it's somewhere in between. And then to your point, typically as part of these pension funding policies, there is some sort of goal of taking, you know, some fraction of surplus in the future to continue setting aside money. That's one way of dollar-cost averaging. And number two, it's just a way to continue attacking this challenge that doesn't look to be going away anytime soon.
Thank you. And my last question is page 30 of your slide, which I think is your appendix, does talk about pension funding reserve policies. Do a majority of the cities that you've worked with, have they, have their councils established such policies?
I would say the majority of cities that we've been working with have established a policy. Usually it's come about because they're doing a bond financing and getting a credit rating because the credit rating agencies really look favorably at having that type of policy. I mean, it's the largest debt for pretty much everybody on the books, so having a policy definitely helps with the credit score. Definitely for all the pension bond issuers, it's been kind of a must because there are savings in those early years that are guaranteed. And so to have some sort of mechanism to lock that up through policy has been very important as well.
Great. That's all the questions I have. Thank you very much for those. And I'll turn it over to any other council member questions, looking for hands? Are there any questions? Seeing no hands, I don't want to miss anybody. I better look down here. Okay. Yeah, seeing no hands, all right. I'll then go to public comment. This is public comment for item C-1. On the agenda, public comment for C1 is now open. And Highland, do we have any public comments, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for a public comment on this item. We have Betty Winholz. Betty, you may now speak.
Welcome, Betty.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I just don't have any questions, but I would like to point out that it, this has to do with risk tolerance, which for me interpreted to mean that the investment has greater risks than the way it's operating now and that the vote at the CFAT was not necessarily a definitive vote, it was a four to three vote. So there wasn't a lot of consensus, in my opinion. I think it's significant to note that our increases has gone up 51% in the last 10 years, which means I think, and I'm sure that you are, looking at how we do retirement, including with our current employees and particularly with department heads and city managers and city attorneys and all that kind of stuff. So I just want to point out that it's, it's, it sounds a little shaky to me, but I'm sure that all of you will make the decision that you feel is best.
Thank you, Betty. Highland, next public comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no more raised hands in the queue.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council. Perhaps I could, I could start us off. I, I do believe, as we all know, this is one of the most significant debt issues that the city is facing. What a great year CalPERS had this year, but who knows what's going to happen next year. I also have been terribly dissatisfied with the return on investment through our existing funds. That's not a staff-related issue. I think it's been primarily because we've not had a vehicle that would allow us not only to definitively establish a policy that would guide dollars being put aside to reduce this UAL, but also having the appropriate vehicle to invest in to make it happen. I, I also would be concerned about how decisions are made with regard to not only the amount of funds that would go into such a fund, but also the decisions on risk corridors, which I believe should be driven by council policy and that a policy should be established to guide and direct exactly what the council will do with regard to these kinds of instruments. guide and direct exactly what the council will do with regard to these kinds of instruments. I do like the Section 115 trust. I also believe that leaving the door open to other opportunities for the city to consider is extremely important and not making this the vehicle for the city to utilize as its singular strategy to address CalPERS, but that we're watching and reevaluating routinely potential opportunities for other vehicles to use to reduce our unfunded liability, including what Ms. Winholz was speaking to with regard to employee, perhaps, share of cost in the future. So for myself personally, I'm ready to move the staff recommendation for item 1, 2, 3, and 4. I would propose adding an item 5. And item 5 would be to establish a pension funding policy that is integrated into a comprehensive financial reserves policy and bring back to council for approval prior to implementing 2, 3, and 4 above. And if you...
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Councilmember Addis. Dana, do you need me to repeat that?
I caught it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So a motion by Mayor Heding to approve the recommendation by staff with the add-on of item number 5 to establish a pension funding policy and to get that approved prior to the implementing the other remainder recommendations, seconded by Councilmember Addis. Councilmember Heller, I see your hand, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I support the motion. I am curious about the three members of the CFAC that oppose this recommendation. I'm wondering if we can get some of the information or some of their concerns wrapped into this process, but generally I support the motion as stated. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Any further discussion or comments?
I just have one, Mayor.
Yes.
Jen stands up, excuse me, Councilmember.
Yeah, I see your hand. Jen, Councilmember Ford, please.
I'm fine with either order in the future. It's totally fine. Yeah, I think you, Mayor, I just, I want to say I support your suggestion of adding number 5 and 1 through 4 as well. You know, I think that it would be irresponsible to go with something like a fresh start approach or, you know, to do a high risk at this point without some policy set in the future. But I, yeah, I think that this was well done. I want to commend our assistant manager, Sarah, for the amazing work that she's been doing since we were blessed with her presence here in our city. And I also want to thank the two individuals, Craig and Mike, for the presentation as well, and thank you for your help and your assistance in this. So great job, everyone. And for someone who, I, you know, I'm not an expert in this field, but after reading the packet, all the information that you gave to council and the presentation this evening, it is much more understandable and pretty self-explanatory. So I commend you on the great job that you did.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Addis.
I wanted to thank staff and thank NHA advisors. We've been talking about CalPERS for a long time and I won't repeat all of the other comments made, but I've said this in other meetings, that it's such a pleasure, from my time on CFAC where there was a lot of gloom and doom, to four years later, being able to plan for the future and feel like there's a lot of optimism and that we're setting ourselves up for good things, including how we approach these issues. And I want to appreciate that. And obviously, that's why I seconded the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton, please.
I too want to thank Sarah and I'm feeling relief in having a game plan here, a roadmap. When I was still working in another city and this all came up, it was like Jen was saying, the gloom and doom part was, you know, it was really quite a shocked cities to have to take this on and figure it out. So I'm feeling like we have a, we definitely have a good game plan here and I too support items 1 through 5.
Great, thank you for that. And item number four, or excuse me, item number three does include a CFAC member on the selection committee, Councilmember Heller. And I have extensive notes on CFAC input and primarily, a lot of the concern had to do with basically not evaluating fully the other instruments and having time to do that. And thusly, you see that the staff recommendation is only to begin with a Section 115 and then at a later date, look at potential other opportunities as they present themselves. And so just a little edification for that.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
You bet. And again, Sarah, thank you for all of your work. I know your plate is full and that this was perhaps maybe just a little bit of vegetables on the side, but great job. And I appreciate Mike, all the work at NHA, Mike and Craig that you're doing and the advice that you've given us. Very clear, concise presentation and we look forward to working together in the future. With that, I will call for, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Great, thank you again. That brings us to item C-2. This is approval of amendment number 3 to contract with Waterworks Engineers LLC for Engineering Design Services during construction of the water reclamation facility, lift station, and offset pipelines. And number 2, approval of amendment number 2 to contract with Anvil Builders, Inc. for construction services for the water reclamation facility, lift station, and off-site pipelines. And Mr. Qualick, I believe, is up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pass it to Paul Amigo, who is project manager for the conveyance project.
Great, welcome, Paul.
Thank you all. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Happy New Year to everybody. We're into hopefully the final year of the conveyance facilities project. And if y'all don't mind, I will share my screen. I have a short presentation, just very short, to describe this particular item. And then we can take questions for that. Sorry, bear with me just real quick. Okay, so hopefully you all can see my screen. So tonight is the conveyance facilities amendments. As we said, it was Anvil. I have a very, very brief construction update I wanted to cover before we get into it, into the two items of business, just because we have some important things going on before I open for questions and answers. The first thing that I wanted to stress to everyone about the South Bay Boulevard closure, which it went into effect right after the Christmas holiday, was that Quintana Road is the detour. We've got, we've peppered the area with signs that ask folks to go slow, that say that the road is rough, because it is. It's still an active work zone. We are not completed with the pipeline project. We were very intentional about when we did the South Bay Boulevard closure. And unfortunately, because of some weather delays at the end of December, we ended up in a very imperfect situation where we had to leave plates in Quintana Road. And so that was an unfortunate circumstances. So we want to ask the community to please bear with us. Go slow and be patient as you go through there and expect delays. A couple other things that we wanted to bring up as I get into this is the Main Street work is progressing toward the bike path. So in the next couple of weeks, hopefully we'll be off of Main Street and onto the bike path and won't be impacting two major thoroughfares into Morro Bay. The pump station work is on track. And most notable, and I think that this has been a good week, discussions with EPA and SHIPPO have been progressing quite well and we expect resolution this month and that we can get in and start building the pipe bridge across Morro Creek, which has been a big item for us as we've worked on the project and hopefully we can get that going. So I'd like to spend more, you know, as more time on questions than on me talking. So I just wanted, as I said, put a couple slides together that go over what the elements are of the different amendments. First, I'll start with the Anvil contract amendment. The first three items that are listed here, the SOCal gas delays and disruptions, the waterline relocation at pump station A, and the miscellaneous unforeseen utility work, represents about 15% of the overall amendment that is in front of you tonight. Of these three items, two of them, the waterline relocation and miscellaneous unforeseen utility work are results of just unmarked and poorly mapped utilities that were discovered during construction. We anticipate that these things will occur during construction, so we budget for them. We have contingency budgets that we put in place because unfortunately, this is what we experience when we go dig around in the ground in communities that have been developed for quite some time. The SOCal gas delays and disruptions, one of the elements of the project is that the pipelines parallel a high-pressure gas main for quite a bit of the alignment. And so the coordination with SOCal gas has been quite challenging at times, just given the nature of their need to observe our construction near the gas line and Anvil's scheduling of their crews and when they're going to be close to it, what defines, what needs a standby and so forth. So unfortunately, we've had some false starts and different items that have resulted in some disruptions and delays on both sides. It's not just Anvil's side, but also SOCal gas's side. So that's what those three items are. The other three, the undisputed MTBM delays, the emergency generator modifications, and the jack and bore concrete debris are the three bigger ticket items that we're considering tonight. The two, the MTBM and the bike path jack and bore, both of those were related to our trenchless construction elements of the project. The first one there, the MTBM delays and disruptions, I think we've talked about in the past, the microtunnel under the roundabout was stopped for quite some time. This particular item resolves all outstanding disputes with that subcontractor in Anvil and we can move on from that, from the stoppage of that microtunnel machine under the roundabout. And then the bike path jack and bore concrete debris, unfortunately, due to, I would say, poor historical records between, from Caltrans, there was an old concrete box culvert that was in place that didn't come up on any utility research or any sort of record research. And unfortunately, we, as we were going through in that trenchless crossing, we hit that and probably about a quarter of the 60-inch diameter casing pipe that we went through there was in conflict with an old box culvert. So the contractor there had to actually get in there with and hand excavate that. So those two things were associated with, those two items were associated with trenchless crossings. The last item that I want to discuss is the emergency generator modifications. And this is another unfortunate circumstance that Morro Bay found itself in, which was that from the progression of the design into the fabrication of the generators into the permitting of this with the Air Pollution Control District, which is responsible for overseeing the implementation of California's air quality regulations. The generator best available control technology for emissions control changed during this timeframe over the four years from the inception of design to fabrication of the generators. And so we were required to upgrade those to Tier 4 emissions controls. And it was just a matter of timing, an unfortunate matter of timing on that. And so the $300,000 here represents the first step toward getting the backup generators upgraded to meet current emissions controls. This just buys the parts to upgrade the generators to meet Tier 4 requirements. There will be additional costs that would be, that will need to be considered in the future to actually pipe those parts to the generators and to put together foundations and different site improvements for the generator modifications for that element. So that's unfortunately a big ticket item that is going to also incur additional costs in the future. So with this, with these items here, we have about a $587,000 amendment that would revise the contract amount for Anvil to just shy of $33 million, $32,755,662 for this contract amendment. Before I move on, I can stop for questions or I could get through the whole thing, the whole, both amendments, if you want me to stop now, I can.
Go ahead, Paul. Why don't you finish?
Okay.
Thank you.
So the Waterworks Engineers Amendment that's in front of y'all tonight, it tracks with many of the same elements that were, are in the Anvil contract amendment, the emergency generator modifications. Those modifications will need to be designed and incorporated into the site. Again, unfortunately during design, those, the two generators that were designed at the two pump station sites were designed for prior emission standards. And so with the additional equipment that needs to be installed on the generators, there are additional site improvements that need to be made. And so Waterworks needs to incorporate those into the designs. They also supported, Waterworks also supported us during the microtunnel delay claim evaluation. There was quite a bit of discussion between us and Anvil about what site conditions were present, what they knew, et cetera, et cetera, and how we, and what engineering design support we needed during the negotiation of that delay claim. The other element, the other items that are in front of you tonight, the bike path joint trench realignment. One of the benefits that we've discussed about getting the additional easement from Vistra is that we are now allowed to spread the pipelines out to achieve better separation or to required separation from division of drinking water. And so Anvil, or I'm sorry, Waterworks has been looking closely at the joint trench and the pipelines and the bike path to realign those now that we have that 70 feet available for us. And so that's what's included in this. And then there are additional improvements to the, what we call the air relief structure where the effluent sewer, the new effluent pipeline ties into the existing outfall that goes into the ocean. The regional board has been looking at this air relief structure and the outfall as we've been permitting the new facility. And so we believe that, or there will be additional enhancements that will need to be made to that air relief structure to incorporate the flow into that. In addition to that, there are a couple of electrical and instrumentation design elements that need to be considered by Waterworks and additional support services just that have incurred additional level of effort for the, as we progress through construction. There are also a couple, several optional services that Waterworks is, that Waterworks is included in this amendment for temporary crossing Morro Creek. As I mentioned earlier, the interaction we've had with EPA and SHIPPO over the slow 16 cultural resource area has necessitated the need for us to look at options for temporarily crossing Morro Creek. Should we not be able to, to that pipeline, that Morro Creek crossing not be ready by the time we're ready to start up the plant? We may end up in a situation where we have to temporarily bypass Morro Creek while we're constructing the bridge if the plant, if we need to seed the plant before the pipelines are ready. So we were ready to have Waterworks assist us with some temporary piping across that, across the creek if it turns out that that delay continues to impact the startup of the existing, or the new facility. And then there are some additional services here for exist, evaluation of the existing extraction wells and for the recycled water component. And then... And then the, the element with the Regional Board related to the air relief structure and the outfall sewer, that's what the RO connection is. And then the, as I said, the air relief structure enhancements design. So with the services that are included in this amendment at $217,000, that would bring Waterworks revised contract amount to just over $2.4 million for that, for their amendment. So with that, I will take questions from council.
Hey, thank you, Paul. Very much appreciate your report and the details on the proposed contract amendments. I'm going to open it up for any council questions of Paul. For Councilmember Hiller, I see your hands, sir. Please.
All righty. Thank you, Mayor. So Paul, appreciate the presentation very much. For the general public, could you explain why the EPA-SHIPO agreement is so important in layman's terms, in terms of moving the project forward?
Yeah, so there's been a known, there's a known cultural resource area that has been mapped, it was mapped during the environmental impact report. We call it Slow 16. That's the designation of that resource area. And it is a very rich cultural, I hate to use the word deposit, but that's unfortunately, that's the, that's the professional term that's used for it, but a cultural resource area from a lot of, a long history of Native American settlement along Morro Creek in the area of Lila Kaiser Park. And that cultural resource area, it extends from a depth of about five to 10 feet. Unfortunately, the pipelines, as they approach Morro Creek, they get into that, and the bridge abutments get into that cultural resource area. And that needs to be addressed in a very respectful and comprehensive manner so that we are, as we construct those bridge abutments, we're treating those cultural resources in accordance with state and federal law.
Okay. That's a good explanation. What's the nature of the agreement between EPA and SHIPO?
EPA and SHIPO entered into a programmatic agreement because the city is, is accepting federal funding from EPA, from WIFIA. EPA and SHIPO, and SHIPO entered into a programmatic agreement that covers how these resources would be treated and how we would investigate the extent of the resources and how we would clear those areas for construction of the pipelines. Morro Bay is a signatory to that agreement, but they're not really party to the agreement. So as we've progressed through this, EPA is the funding agency, has to work with SHIPO on the National Historic Preservation Act and how these resources are going to be treated. And so as the funding agency, they needed to comply with State Historic Preservation Office regulations and requirements for how they're treated. And so we've, we've been working closely with EPA to make sure that we are providing them with the information that's needed and the investigation that's needed to define those resources now we're going to treat during construction.
Okay. I appreciate that explanation. When I'm looking at the numbers here for the changes, they all seem legitimate to me. Unfortunately, the result of, of running a number of large pipes through the center of the city. When I look at the numbers, I'm never quite sure what, what they mean in terms of the budget or what the previous contract amount was, or is retention going to be used to pay for this, or what is the total program cost now? You know what I mean? I mean, can these numbers be included in your staff reports so that we have some context on where the, where the budget is for the piping project in this example and for the entire program? I don't know, I don't want to ask you to pull that off the top of your head. I don't know what those numbers are, but it seems to me it's difficult to make the decision without knowing those numbers.
So in terms of the, so I'm looking at those right now, the original contract amount for Anvil was around $31.5 million. There was an amendment number one that, that the council approved, I think it was back in October, for just shy of $700,000. This one with $587 would bring the total contract amount to $32,755,000.
Does the contingency cover the, this increase from this amendment?
So the content, the program, the contingency that has, was allocated to the conveyance facilities covers this amendment. But with this amendment, we are in a situation where we're going to have to allocate funding from another part of the program in order to cover, to beef up the contingency, if you will.
Okay. So I guess what I'm interested in seeing going forward, Paul, is, is that information that it's being funded by this contingency, and this is the remaining contingency if this amendment is approved? You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, that'd be really helpful, I think, in the future.
Okay.
Those, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Hiller. Great question, and I appreciate the question about showing the budget, the remaining value and contingency utilized too. Very much appreciated. Other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for item C dash two. Public comment is now open. And Highland, any public comments, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two raised hands in the queue. First up is Betty Winholz.
Welcome, Betty.
Thank you. I appreciate the questions. It's never a happy time to have these reports because they're always increasing the amount of money that this project is. And, you know, not to harp on past mistakes, but it seems like they continue to happen. I did note that in the report, I think they said there was $17,000 left in this contingency fund, which is very, very low, and no wonder we'll have to borrow from another part of the program. Very concerned about the crossing of the Morro Creek Bridge. I know that, that structure's been sitting out alongside the road, maybe somewhere else on the property now, but it appeared to be resting. I don't know if there will be a new bridge that holds the pipe, or how that's going to work, or if it needs to be put above ground instead of underground. And then my last comment would be with regard, are you done cutting trees along the bike path, or will there be more coming down? It is, it has just become more and more of a blight. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Highland, next public comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up, we have Sean Green.
Welcome, Sean.
Thank you, council, and thanks for the, the staff report. Three quick items. First, city leadership has been advertising consistently that the bike path construction would be taking place through the end of 2021, as if, kind of implying that that would be the end of it, but it looks like it's just the beginning of it. I'm wondering when that bike path that is our, pretty much our only thoroughfare north-south for pedestrians and bikes will be expected to reopen. The second question I have, I was formerly working with our late city councilman, Red Davis, to push for, if possible, an elevation increase of that bike path just southwest, or I guess that would be just northwest of the crossing at Main, where it consistently floods even with the lightest of rain. So just following back up to see if we did get any elevation gain, even 12 inches would probably prevent that consistent backup. And then lastly, it seems like there's a pretty big ticket dollar item for the, what sounds like underengineering of the generator or generators at one or two lift stations. And I want to kind of know who, whose responsibility that is. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Highland, next public comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no more raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and bring it back to, a closed public comment, bring it back to council. And Paul, are you with us still? I think, I hope.
I am.
Okay, great. Could you maybe comment on the bridge issue that Ms. Winholz brought up?
So.
Replaced, quote unquote?
Yeah, so those, the materials that have been stored in Lila Kaiser Park, we are currently evaluating those materials. We've been working with Anvil on that. They do not, at this point, appear to meet our specification. And so at this point, they are currently rejected. We have not accepted those materials or the storage of those materials as they've been, as they've been placed there. So that's an ongoing situation, and we're working with Anvil on remedying that.
And the tree question about any more trees being?
Yes, so.
On the bike path?
There were two questions related to that, if you don't mind, Mayor. There was another question about drainage around the bike path.
Yes, that was Sean's question, correct.
Yep. So those two things are pretty, those are related. So the, one of the elements that was in the Waterworks amendment, which was the spreading of the pipelines out on the bike path and reconfiguring the pipelines there, I think we've discussed this a couple of meetings ago, where after closing the easements with Vistra, we now have access to that full 70-foot width. And that gives the, gives us an opportunity, and gives the community an opportunity to spread those pipelines out, eliminate waterline relocation, eliminate casing of the purified waterline to achieve division of drinking water separation. That also provides a benefit for the community to improve that bike path, not from, just from a drainage perspective, but also from a lighting perspective, from a, you know, aesthetic perspective. So the unfortunate circumstance there is that by spreading those pipes out, we do have to remove additional trees. Had an initial conversation with Coastal Commission about that. Coastal Commission has come back to us and asked us for additional information about why those trees would need to be removed because, you know, the initial coastal permit only allowed for a certain number of trees to be removed, and that was when we were going to put the pipes into the narrower easement. Because of tree health issues, because of public safety issues, if we cut a main route to one of those trees, if we snake those pipes through there, we could have a situation where we weaken trees, we can, and which would pose a future public health risk because those trees could fall over. If you go out and look now, that you can see a lot of the trees, those trees, a lot of those trees have been topped because of where they're placed under power lines. They're stressed, they're diseased, they're not in good health. PG&E admits that they would love to go in and do some additional work to those trees, but they're sort of hamstrung with the same requirements that, of tree removal and being able to do maintenance. So both PG&E and, and the city team, as we've looked at the bike path, and we've, we've looked at this and said, there's an opportunity to spread the pipelines out, to provide a more aesthetic bike path, to provide better coastal access. Unfortunately, we will have to remove more trees. And we do have a rendering from a landscape architect, and again, we're, we're in the middle of all of this at the moment, for a concept with the bike path could look like in the future with better tree placement, better species selection, et cetera, to be able to improve that, to remedy some of the drainage situations and remedy some of the tree health issues that currently affect the bike path now.
And then the question that Sean had about the bike path construction ending in 2021, that notice and when realistically, can we plan on that potentially happening?
Yeah, that was, I think that December 31st, 2021, December 31st, 2021 date was us being optimistic that we could resolve the situation with EPA and SHIPO in a timely manner, and unfortunately, that has dragged out much longer than any of us would have anticipated. We've recently put up signs that have indicated that the bike path could be closed as long as the fall. So I think the date that we selected for that was September 30th, 2022. We needed to put some sign up indicating that it was going to continue to be closed. And so I picked the date of September 30th because I was optimistic we could resolve this with EPA this month, and we anticipate about eight months of construction for that pipe bridge.
Okay, thank you. The last one, I know you've mentioned it, but the California Air Resources Board changed their regulations with regard to the generator after the spec and, and the generator was ordered. Did you want to just briefly explain that again?
Yeah, this is an interesting one, in that air pollution regulations are, they're, they're really, they hinge on what, what is known as best available control technology, and that is on a variety of different pollutants. And when one air district in the state accepts and, and some agent, and an agency demonstrates that they can achieve best available control technology, that then becomes the best available control technology that other air pollution control districts then would require of these, these types of generators. What ended up happening was it was, it was a timeline issue, and as you map out the timeline of when the design started to when it was completed, to when the project was bid, to when the generator was accepted, to when it was fabricated, and so on. It was a matter of timing, and unfortunately, the city kind of got caught up in the middle of that timing and when the generators were fabricated and when best available control technology was required to be implemented. So we did try to work with the Air Pollution Control District, and, and Air Pollution Control District elected to require the higher control technology because it is available and those generators can be retrofitted. So I'm hoping that is a.
Yeah, well, it's a, it's a California Air Resources Board requirement.
Correct.
That's locally administered through APCD, but it's a CARB issue, is what it's.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Definitely correct.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, thank you again, Paul, for your comprehensive presentation and explanation of that. I'll either entertain further discussion or a motion. Councilmember Ford?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have a question that came up after Paul, his last comments about the bike path. I'm curious, you mentioned a landscape architect, you know, helping to create a new path and one that's better and more useful and bike-friendly and safer. Will there be any public input on, on what that will look like? Or have you already received public input on what that will look like? And, you know, comments like Mr. Green's are great, you know, just having that input on those that use it regularly and issues they've experienced in the past and suggestions for the future?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. It's, again, I hate to always say it's a matter of timing, and, you know, time is of the essence in these sorts of things. So the, the first order of business is to get Coastal Commission, to work with Coastal Commission on, on the additional tree removals that we would need to, the additional tree removals in order to construct the pipelines. And so as part of that, we have a concept plan that is, that generally presents a concept of what we think the bike path might look like in the future. Once the, once the Coastal Commission accepts the additional tree removals, and, and then we can move forward with those tree removals so we can construct the pipelines, we need to develop a detailed restoration plan for that, that we can hand Anvil so that they can, so that they can hire somebody to plant trees and do the spacing and so on. At that time, as we lead toward that final detailed restoration plan, that's when we would bring that forward. So we're going to present the concept plan to Coastal Commission. Obviously, that's a public document. We're, we're glad to bring that back and show everybody what that concept looks like. But then when the final detailed restoration plan comes in, which is species selection, and it would be aligned with the city's tree replacement plan, then that's when we would bring it to a meeting like this to, to get public input.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, or I'd be happy to entertain a motion? Okay, I will go ahead and move the staff recommendation to authorize the city manager to execute number one, amendment number three, to the agreement with Waterworks Engineers LLC, WWE, for engineering design services during construction and optional tasks for the water reclamation facility, lift station, and off-site pipelines for the amount of $132,239, with an additional $84,857 for optional additional services for a grand total of And number two, amendment number two, to the agreement with Anvil. And number two, amendment number two, to the agreement with Anvil Builders, Inc., for construction of the WRS conveyance facilities for the mount, the amount of $587,502.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor Heading, second by Councilmember Ford for the staff recommendation. Further comments or discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries five up.
Thank you again, Paul. I appreciate your presentation and your expertise. Thanks for all that you do for us.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. That brings us to item C dash three. This is a discussion of council member compensation and consideration for the introduction of ordinance number six four seven to increase consistent with state law and CFAC recommendation, the salaries of city council members and the mayor. And I will turn it over to, I believe, Mr. Collins.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, Mayor, and council members and members of the public. I have a presentation, I'm going to share my screen here real quick and get going on this. All right, can you see that okay?
Yes.
All right, I kind of have it, yeah, that's going to work all just fine. Okay, so as Mayor mentioned, this is an item to discuss council member compensation and consider introduction of ordinance number six four seven to increase consistent with state law and Citizen Finance Advisory Committee or CFAC for the remainder of this presentation recommendation of the salaries of the city council members and the mayor. By way of background, most councilmembers, I'm probably sure aware, maybe members of the community are aware, that council policy set several years ago that asked CFAC to review council compensation and make recommendations to council every four years. CFAC had two discussions, both in November and in December of 2021, and recommended that council increase council member monthly stipends by $500 per month, bringing them to a total of 1,000 per month, and increase the mayor's stipend by an additional $200 per month over that, going from one, sorry, $700 to $1,400 per month by ordinance and not adjust council's medical benefits. This is important to note, this would result in total monthly council compensation, which includes stipends and benefits at or below the county average when excluding San Luis Obispo City, which would obviously bring that up, bring that lower because they, they pay a much higher rate overall. Just by way of background, the legal framework for stipends is governed by California Government Code 36516, sets an initial limit based on population, can increase by ordinance up to 5% per year, not compounding, and higher increases beyond that requires voter approval. At this time, the current stipends for councilmembers is 500 per month, the mayor is $700 per month, which includes that $500 base per month plus 200. Last updated 20 years ago, 2002, it was increased from $300 a month to the current rate at that time. By way of background, again, comparing to other cities excluding City of Slow because they're much higher, you get a sense of the, this column here is the monthly stipends per, per month for each of the cities, Rojo Grande, Tascadero, Grover, Paso Robles, Pismo Beach. You have the average of the cities compared to the Morro Bay current monthly stipend, and then on this column over here on the right, you have the mayor's stipends. Again, average is 834 for those five cities and Morro Bay is at $700 per month at this time. Currently, we have optional benefits available to elected officials. We cover the full cost, lowest cost CalPERS medical plan for member only and dental vision, and we have a $50,000 life insurance policy per member only. Monthly costs, if a member elects, the maximum available coverage on the health and dental side is $778.63 per month per member. And this is another comparative, looking at the same five cities within the county, excluding City of Slow. 644 again is the average on the monthly stipends. Here's City of Morro Bay at 500. This is just looking at councilmembers, not the mayor. Total health over here on this column, average of the other five cities is $1,344 per month, and the city's $779 per month maximum health benefit. And this column, the far right, is the total of the max benefit plus stipend. You see that the average of the other five cities is almost at 2,000 per month and the City of Morro Bay is at about $1,300 per month. We did look at some, explore some health benefit alternatives, looking at including medical for family, to give you a sense of what it would, would cost if, if members took those additional benefits that they were offered, going from the current 779 per month all the way up to if it included family members at the highest rate comparable to city employees would be $1,780 per month. Looking at the fiscal impacts, we are looking at the recommendation if, if we were to do max increase in the annual stipend, or sorry, monthly stipend for, for everyone, that would be at a cost of $32,400 per month, bringing the total revised to $64,800 per month, the total stipend compensation. And down here below looks at the, the current amount that's paid, what could be paid with the maximum allowed benefit package of $46,000, $46,718 per year. And if we went above that to provide additional medical benefits, you can see what that would do on the cost side to the city. So the Citizen Finance Advisory Committee, as I mentioned, reviewed this twice late last year per city council policy, had really good discussion, asked for additional data, which was all put together for them in the second meeting in December, and all that information is included in the staff report. I really want to thank Dana Swanson, Assistant City Manager, Sarah Johnson Rios, and our city attorney, Chris Meyer, for doing a lot of great research and pulling this together. But ultimately, it was CFAC's recommendation to adjust the council member compensation by ordinance by $500 per month per council member, again, bringing that to $1,000 per month total, and additional $200 per month for the mayor above that, taking the mayor's spot from $700 per month to $1,400 per month by introducing for first reading by title only, and with further reading waived ordinance number six four seven, which would amend chapter 2.20 of Title II of the Morro Bay Municipal Code, and accept CFAC's recommendation to make no adjustments at this time to current council member health benefits. With that, I conclude my presentation. I do have all three of the aforementioned individuals who really made this possible, Chris Newmeyer, Sarah Johnson Rios, and Dana Swanson are all available to answer your questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Very comprehensive review, a lot of good detailed information, and I appreciate the historical references that you made as well, given the last actions that were taken by council regarding this. Let me go ahead and open it up if there are any council member questions of staff. Entertain those at this time. Seeing no, Councilmember Addis, yes, please.
I do have just one question, and this really has to do with the length of time between the last time this was considered and, and what's happening now, and if there are any mechanisms to start to consider more regularly, not to give automatic increases. I know that we can't do that, but are there other ways that we might start to make this a matter of, you know, a little bit more regular course in what happens within the city and compensation overall?
You want me to take it, Scott, or do you?
Well, I could just, just state that, you know, the, the council policy was, was revised several years ago to, to put it on that four-year cycle. Councilmember Addis, other potential ways of doing this would maybe do it after the, each time, you know, the union bargaining units have completed negotiations, could be a trigger for reviewing council compensation, which probably would occur more frequently than the four-year cycle on, on CFAC, but that's tightly under, you know, council purview. And if we wanted to change that, would be a future gen item.
And I believe the next scheduled review is 2026.
That is correct, according, if we, if we continue to follow the current council policy on that.
So to clarify, if we wanted to look at changing, we'd bring it back under item D tonight?
That's correct. I would, I would, I don't think there's enough in the staff report to look at that, or you could consider it tonight, but yeah, as a future gen item for sure.
Thank you.
Welcome. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for item C dash three on the agenda. Public comment is now open. Highland, do you have any public comments, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Betty Winholz for public comment.
Welcome, Betty.
Thank you, this is Betty Winholz, and I will offer you a little historic perspective because this happened when I was on council from 2003 to 2010. Twice it came before us and twice we chose not to increase our pay, and the reason is we saw this as a service, that this is your public service, the token amount was given to you as an appreciation, it wasn't seen as something that supplements anyone's income. Maybe this is a difference in people who approach political office today, that it's, it's not, you're not seeing, you being the city council is not seen as employees, you're seen as representatives of the public, and therefore, you're not seen as someone that deserves a lot of money or that needs to have increases periodically. So to some degree, that's, that's, just goes against my grain because that's how my beliefs have been about the political and service statesmanship type of attitude I have towards elected positions. I think it's really important and that I, one of the reasons I'm so concerned about not being in public meeting anymore is because the public can't see what I sent to you. And what it says, if you saw what I sent to you, is that the mayor of San Luis Obispo makes $1,800 a month, and to raise the City of Morro Bay's mayor position to $1,430 makes you the second highest paid mayor in the county, even above cities like Paso and Tascadero that have much greater populations, and, and that you're not in the middle currently, actually, you're closer to the median than you are when you raise it. And that would go for council members as well. You'll become the third highest paid city council members, just $7,200, or just $72 below Pismo, who is $200 below San Luis Obispo. So it's a little ludicrous to me that, that you are even considering this kind of increase in your pay. I, I don't know how to stress that it's, and I'll use a derogatory term, I guess it's money grubbery. I don't think it's appropriate, particularly in an election year. I think if you make a token gesture of $100 or $50, I think the people could swallow that, but there has been so much expense that you have asked us for, we've given you, you want property taxes for the harbor, you have gotten sales tax, you've gotten, you know, tonight you passed on money that's going to cost us more for the sewer plant. I don't know how you continue to spend our money and then think that you should get more money yourselves for doing that. So that's just the frustration of a resident who's perceiving what's going on.
Highland, is there any other public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no more raised hands in the queue.
Okay, closed public comment, bring it back to council, and either entertain a motion or further discussion. Councilmember Addis?
I just have a quick question around health benefits, and if health benefits are added in, do those, how does Morro Bay rank?
Scott, you want to pull that slide back up?
Yes, happy to do that. I think it will show that, let me, let me find that slide first before speaking. Let's see here. One moment, appreciate your patience. Okay, so we'll, we'll go over the monthly stipend again. Again, this is the council members, and there's an additional amount for the mayor on top of this, but here are the five cities, Rojo Grande, Tascadero, Grover Beach, Paso Robles, Pismo Beach, all currently making more than the city. Of course, to the city, when, when above that, we'd be higher up on, on terms of the monthly stipend, but, you know, the full story is looking at total comp, which also includes health maximums that are allowed, and this is, this tells the full picture. Rojo Grande has a total health max per month of 1,836, Tascadero almost 900, Paso Robles almost 1,900, Pismo Beach almost 2,100, averaging out to about 1,344 for those five cities. The City of Morro Bay again maxes out on the health benefit at 780 per month, and this again looks at the total comp, not just the stipends. Morro Bay currently at 1,300 per month, average of the five cities is almost $2,000 per month. So taking that up 500 would still keep it below, below that, that maximum amount. So hopefully that answers a question, and, you know, again, Dana and Sarah probably could provide more, more context or background if, if that's needed.
Thank you, that was my, that was my only question.
Okay. Let's just take that slide down.
Sure thing.
Sure, thank you. Councilmember Heller, please.
We're at the comment phase now, aren't we?
Yes, sir.
So obviously, this is controversial when the people elected vote on giving themselves a raise, and it's always controversial on any level of government. And with respect to Betty Winholz's comments regarding service, I mean, I agree with that 100% that service is an important component of running for election in Morro Bay, and it's something I'm, I'm very proud and honored to be serving. On the other hand, I think that it's important that we at least be close to what other cities are getting compensated, particularly because if we want a more diversified council, it might provide the opportunity for a working person to supplement their income and serve on the council, which is my main reason for wanting this increase for some time, even if that means one more person who's a working person, maybe with a family, as opposed to, and I'm one of these, as opposed to having mostly retirees up here, semi-retired people. I think the perspective of mothers and working family members is important to be on this council, and if paying an extra $500 a month makes a difference in getting someone to run, in today's world, more than ever, we need people to run for office, we need people to volunteer to be on the advisory committees, more than ever, we need it now. So I fully support this increase for that reason, and I thank staff and for working on this and working it up. I think it's an important step forward for the City of Morro Bay. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Heller. Let me just add, before I call on Councilmember Addis, that, you know, by policy, we asked the Citizens Advisory Finance Committee to review this, and they spent two meetings looking at this in detail, and this comes as their recommendation. I believe it was a six to one vote as well, and so that's the fire screen, in my opinion, between council, looking at their recommendation and appreciating their extensive analysis of this. Councilmember Addis, please.
I just wanted to concur with Councilmember Heller. It's one of the many areas that we agree on, and I appreciate, I appreciate the way you described it, Councilmember Heller, thank you.
And I think important to note, and I apologize, I hadn't brought it up earlier, I think, in the staff report. the staff report, but that the increases wouldn't go into effect until after the the regular election in November. So that sort of creates that added firewall, if you will, of giving yourselves races, because there, you got to, several of you would face an election if you choose to run. So it really is sort of the future council. It's not perfect, because we don't have all five running at the same time, but that is, that's one of the ways, reasons why the state law was written out by. So sorry, I didn't bring that up earlier.
Councilmember Ford, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the comments from both of our council members so far. I agree, and I want to also point out that a stipend of $500 back in, you know, 2003, 2004, went a lot further than a stipend now for $500 in the year 2022. So, you know, there is, there is a difference on cost of living and a lot of other elements that come with that. And so unfortunately, it's been a 20-year span, so of course, it's dramatic. And and it's, you know, as has been pointed out, it's hard to vote for something that could possibly benefit us, you know, if we're, if those of us who are up for election are elected. But I I do agree that, you know, being close to having the same amount of benefits, you know, both health and stipend together to be comparable to the other cities in our county is important. So, yeah, that's pretty much all I have to say. But thank you to all the staff. Oh, sorry, I just wanted to also say thank you to the staff, all of you that worked really hard on this, and to CFAK who combed through it and put a lot of thought into it as well. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Any other comments? Then I will entertain a motion hearing, support all the way through almost. Looking for a motion?
I'd like to move that we accept the Citizen Finance Advisory Committee's recommendation to adjust council member compensation by ordinance by $500 per month per council member and an additional $200 per month for the mayor by introducing for first reading by title only and with further, further reading waived, Ordinance 647 and Ordinance of the City Council and the City of Morro Bay, amending Chapter 2.2 Officer Salaries of Title II Administration and Personnel of the Morro Bay Municipal Code to increase, consistent with state law and CFAK recommendation, the salaries of city council members and the mayor. And two, accept CFAK's recommendation to make no adjustments to current council member health benefits.
Motion by Councilmember Barton for staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Heller. Any further discussion?
I will probably, Mayor, would like to bring something back on the future agenda items.
When we get there, you certainly may. Thank you. I'll be supporting the motion as well for the agreeing with the comments that were made by my peers, and thank you for that. We'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis? Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor heading?
Yes.
Motion carries five up.
Thank you for that. That brings us to item C-4. This is the adoption of Resolution 0422, authorizing the submission of a grant application for state rural recreation and tourism grant program for Coleman Park improvements and provide input on Coleman Park conceptual plan. And I believe I'm going to return it to Mr. Qualick again. Welcome back, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very pleased to offer this presentation to city council. And again, this is for the rural recreation and tourism grant application for Coleman Park improvements and to receive input on the conceptual plan amenities that were presented along with the staff report. I'm really hoping towards the end of this presentation, this is more of a conversation, because again, staff is is seeking city council feedback and input and answers to questions that were included in the staff report. So I will do a quick overview. I don't know why my, why that's not working. Let me try this again. There we go. So general overview of Coleman Park. We know this park attracts many visitors, including tourists and local community members. It has a proximity to major attractions, including the Barca Dara, Moro Rock, and Moro Rock Beach. It is crossed by a multi-use path that sees a lot of pedestrians and cyclists, and it's near a launch point for water-based activities such as kayaking. So those are all strong positives for Coleman Park. On the other hand, we recently had to demolish a restroom due to structural issues. I believe the restroom was built in the 50s. It has a rarely-used basketball court with a cracked slab that takes up a large footprint and has a very unattractive fence, especially in that beautiful location. And in general, the park is underimproved and underutilized. So staff did identify this park as a priority area for improvements. We took it upon ourselves to conduct a survey of grant opportunities, and of course, there was the per capita grant that actually was approved by city council a couple of years ago, but then the state wasn't ready to accept our applications. So we recently did apply. That application was due on December 31st, just 11 or 12 days ago. So we have not heard back yet if we are getting those funds. However, it is a non-competitive grant, and every city is entitled to apply for the $177,000, so we don't expect that that is any kind of issue. And those funds are going to be applied to the restroom construction or the purchase of a free, a prefab restroom for Coleman Park, and possibly in conjunction with this this grant application that we're talking about tonight. We also looked at the regional parks program. Actually, we, we kind of went down that path for quite some time, were really excited about it. And then the grant, the grant guidelines never said that cities were not eligible. We actually found that out later. So that was unfortunate. And that is a Prop 68 grant through the state, as is the Rural Recreation and Tourism Program, also a Prop 68 grant program from the state. And again, that, that is what we're talking about tonight. We're also considering an application for the Clean California Grant Program. We could potentially apply this to Coleman Park improvements. We may also be able to apply it to other projects that we have. So that, that's something we're evaluating. That application is also coming very quickly, so we may be bringing that to council at the next council meeting. So in order to apply for the grant, we want to have a project concept. And, you know, right now, as you all know, we don't yet have a Parks Master Plan, which is something that we'd like to do in the near future, is something we'd like to work on, but we did not want to let this opportunity slip. So we, we decided rather than come up with a project ourselves, we bring it to the community and hear their input. So this is really a ground-up effort for this project. So we held a couple of community meetings. All major stakeholder groups were invited in the city. We also invited individual members. We had 30 attendees one day and 15 the next day. One of the events was held in the evening so that working families could attend, and actually, some parents with with small children came out and gave their input. We also made an open invitation to folks that, that they can go on our website, download a blank Coleman Park map, mark up that map any way they wish, take a picture of it and send it to the Public Works Department as their input, or just email us their input. And we did receive 21 such emails from, from residents. And then also, part of the community engagement process is this meeting here, this presentation to city council. And also next week, before we submit the application on Thursday, we want to get some final input from the Public Works Advisory Board on Wednesday. So you can see, we're dealing with a very tight timeline, and that's one of the reasons why your, your input is so important to us. So the input received from the community engagement process thus far has formed the basis of the project amenities and the concept plan that were presented in the staff report. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. So the amenity suggestions, just in general, I wanted to give you an idea of some of the ideas that came up. This is certainly not a comprehensive list, but we, we were encouraged to think about including family-friendly exercise stations and amenities, natural, not traditional, plastic playgrounds for children, a stage, concert space, natural native gardens, picnic tables, historical monuments, cultural and educational interpretive signage and plaques, an art component and/or sculptures, improved ADA accessibility and additional barbecue stations and fire pits. So the city went back and took a look at these suggestions and vetted them for feasibility and compliance with, you know, what we expect to be, the coastal commission regulations as, as well as environmental. So we, we narrowed it down to really the top five amenities that were, that we kept consistently hearing. And that was playground areas, a plaza, our stage area for concerts, performances and celebrations. And on, on that one, I just want to note, we actually had a member of the Whitecaps come to one of our community meetings, which was really cool. And the suggestion was, with that stage, was that it actually faced the water, and that folks could come up in their kayaks and listen to small concerts, which I thought was a very creative suggestion. Landscape garden areas, exercise fitness stations, and art historical spaces. So I just want to let you know, originally, we were planning on bringing a few different concepts, because there were, there were just so many suggestions out there, and we narrowed it down to just one concept plan. And we tried to incorporate everything in that plan. That's important to note, because this is not a proposed plan. What, what we are bringing to council tonight in visual form is not what we are going to be applying for as a grant. And I think that, that may be my fault, I may have created some confusion with that. I tried to outline that in the staff report, but it is tricky to understand, like, the city's showing us a map, but by the way, that this is not what is actually being proposed. We just wanted to include all of the amenities that we thought the community really wanted to see, based on the, the input process, and get some feedback on those specific amenities from city council tonight. So again, important notes, it's only an example layout, not a final vision of a fully-completed park project. And the grant application may only include one or two amenities or a small segment of the park area. So on that, we will be working with a consultant that, that the city recently picked up to help us with this application. We want to make sure that this grant application is as competitive as possible. And so after we do receive this input from city council, we'll be working with that consultant to create actually what will be the application. And so we, it's very unlikely that the entire project will be funded. We may just choose a small segment, as, as I just mentioned. And further, the project will likely be phased. So we may apply for, let's say, a stage and a playground and some ADA parking in, for this grant, but then another grant may come up, and we may decide that we want to add some cultural, historical, or art monument, or something of the sort. So I just want to throw that out there. This is not the final, you know, an end-all word on Coleman Park. So here is the conceptual plan. Again, it was included in the staff report, but I will, I will go over it quickly. We have here on the, on the east side of the park, some space for cultural, historical, or art area, landscape gardens, a potential sports court, parking. We wanted to consolidate parking, because we think it's important to have paved ADA-accessible parking. And also, that's, that's sort of a legal requirement that, that we would have to do. So in this concept plan, the, the restroom and concession stand are, are on, on the east side of the park. Again, more cultural, historic, and art areas and landscape gardens. We have some DG pathways and exercise fitness stations, some playgrounds, seating, and we have that plaza or stage that's right in the center. And then again, more playgrounds and landscape areas and parking and art areas. We also just threw some parking in here as an example of what, you know, we could potentially do. That has not yet been vetted by a traffic engineer, but that's something we'd want to get if we did propose that. It's also something maybe if we did think was a good idea, we can propose in a, in a separate phase. So one note on this, very important, no one has to decide tonight that the plaza, you know, looks a certain way or is facing a certain way, though that input would be appreciated. We are going to include these amenities in a grant application, but they don't have to be specific to, you know, aesthetics or design elements that are included. That, that comes later if we actually get the grant. So I know some emails came in after this agenda was published, some very thoughtful emails, and very, very comprehensive emails, which I, I thought were great. And there was one, for example, that mentioned, you know, some, maybe some height restrictions to retain the view. Yeah, so all of that are, you know, that's, that's an important piece of feedback. But again, that, that would be something that we'd look at when we're actually designing these elements after we receive funding, if, if we do. So as mentioned in the staff report, we do have some questions for council, and that's really the subject of the presentation, is we, we want to hear, based on what you've seen, and based on, I know, I know some of you were actually at the community meetings, which was great, and based on things you've heard from the community, the answers to these five questions that we have. And so we will use this feedback and answers to these questions by city council to, to develop a clear project for the grant, and also to develop the project cost estimate. So if someone said, just turn it all into natural area, maybe that, that's something we could do completely with this grant, and, and that would be the end of the project. Or if, if, if the suggestions were like, we really, really like the stage, but let's hold off on playground, because, you know, we're not really sure what we want to do there yet, okay, then, you know, we might apply for the stage in this grant, and then all the other amenities and some other grant cycle. So question one, and, and Mayor, unless you object, I'd like to go through all the questions and then take, take the answers after. Thank you. So question one, does city council support creating ADA-accessible parking spaces and consolidating all parking for Coleman Park onto smaller footprint asphalt areas? As you know, right now, there is just a lot of dirt parking that takes up a large portion of the park, which is really unfortunate. To do this, the park design would include some new accessible concrete walkways. Without consolidated parking, less space is available for recreational and cultural amenities. Question two, does the city council support construction of a stage or plaza for small events and concerts? This amenity could be used for community groups and events, and also could bring in future revenue for the city. The Division of Recreation Services would manage the use of this plaza or stage. Question three, are there any recreational or cultural amenities in the conceptual plan which the city council does not support? Question four, are there any recreational or cultural amenities not already included in the conceptual plan which the city would like to be included? And finally, are there any areas of the existing park that the city council would like to see preserved in their current condition rather than improved? So I'll just close out with the recommendation. Of course, we are recommending that council adopt the resolution number 422, authorizing the submission of the grant application for the state rural recreation and tourism program for the Coleman Park Improvements Project, and provide input to staff on the Coleman Park conceptual plan and recreational and cultural amenities for the park. So I'll, I'll take any feedback or answers to the questions.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you for the great comprehensive report, very exciting start to a neat plan. Thanks to you also for the community engagement process. I appreciate that very much. What I'd like to do is, in your staff report on page 150, are the specific questions, 1 through 5. I'm going to start, because I'd like to take public comment. If you have any clarifying questions for Greg about his presentation, you could ask those now, but I'd like to hold the input to summary comments after public comment. So are there any clarifying questions anybody has for Greg now? Councilmember Barton?
Yes. Greg, I'm curious about the, the application. Does it require you to spell out the specific amount of the grant being requested?
It does.
Okay. Because I'm just wondering about, you know, where we might, you're, we're being asked to approve this thing tonight, but you are going to submit it for January the 20th? but you are going to submit it for January the 20th. And I'm just wondering if there's a specific amount. We don't have it yet and we won't be meeting again until the 25th. So I'm just curious about the application itself. If you need to tell them the amount, we don't have it yet.
I think that's a really good question. So normally, if we were presenting to you for approval, a full project planned, then we would already have a cost estimate. We kind of went the other way around here since we started from the bottom-up approach. And so we are counting on the input from the community and now from City Council and then from PWA to give us their input and based on that, we will put together the project estimate and a clear project and submit an application based on that. So I don't believe we need to present council the exact grant amount that we are applying for in order for council to authorize us to submit the application. Perhaps our city attorney could correct me if I am wrong there, but I think it is sufficient that we are simply asking for authorization to apply for this grant.
Okay. There are lots of different grant applications and the wording is different from different agencies and that sort of thing. I'm just worried about us getting to the day of sending this in and not necessarily having exactly what they need to know from us.
Yeah, I should add, our assistant engineer Pamela Newman has really taken a big role in this project.
Oh, great.
Well, I just want to, sorry. So she has taken a look at the guidelines and that's not something that we saw.
That's wonderful. I just didn't want the, it's horribly, it can be very disappointing if you get to a point and you don't have exactly what they need from you, so that's great.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Barton. Any clarifying questions before public comment and then we'll give input? Okay, seeing none. I'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for item C-4 on our agenda this evening. Public comment is now open. And Highland, do we have any public comments, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Betty Winholz for public comment.
Betty, are you there?
Sorry, I thought I was unmuted. This is Betty again. My comments are the following. I think it's important when one integrates this concept plan into what is currently operational that when you look at your plan, the parking, what people do is they park down by the intake of the power plant on purpose so they can walk the length of the boardwalk and walk back. So to provide parking intermittently in the midst of that is not the way that this area is currently used and probably would prefer to be continually used. It's used for people who want to use that as their exercise, their walking area. So I would want to see the parking stayed where it is and not be intermittent. I also thinks it would be dangerous to put parking along the drive where the cars go, between the park and the drive. I think that you would want to keep that away from that area. I also want to say that the basketball court is not poorly used. I've seen it used many a time when I go down to walk. I understand that it's chain-linked because that's how you keep the basketball out of the water. And I think a number of locals as well as tourists would be disappointed if you removed the basketball court. Or even if you relocated, that would be okay. I would find the stage unacceptable in this area. I would think Coleman, I would think Tidlins Park or down by the chessboard is the more appropriate place for music and concerts, that this is a natural area. It's where people come to look at the sea otters who are right there where you're planning to put the stage. I don't know what kind of interaction that has with animals. We know that there's osprey and peregrines that roost on the lights along the boardwalk or the drive. And I don't know how that interacts, the music with that kind of thing. And so I would think a more passive type of recreation there would be more appropriate, certainly with some children's play because that used to be there. And so I would like to see the concept of those things shifted around, in my opinion. And I'm wondering if you've asked or if you're going to ask the Rec and Parks Commission for their opinion as well.
Thank you, Betty. Highland, the next public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next, we have Sean Green.
Welcome, Sean.
Thank you. First, I want to address people at home, either listening on the internet or on TV. I did provide a several-page detailed analysis of the Coleman Park concept plan as a result of my heavy participation in this area and this valuable process. Unfortunately, the city is now over two months into the choice not to publish public comment for the public, which is pretty disappointing. But that said, this process regarding Coleman Park has been awesome from the beginning, thanks to Public Works Director Greg Qualick. And so I want to thank him. I want to thank Pam Newman. I want to thank City Manager Scott Collins for pushing this forward as well. I'm going to stay high level, even though my analysis that was sent to all of you was pretty detailed. I think it is essential that we talk about the entire concept plan and not just approach this piecemeal and call it a phased approach, or we risk kind of taking on this project in a similar fashion to some of our other projects, which, you know, which often lack consistency over time and sometimes have different areas that are incompatible with others. So I do think it's important to take the whole project on at once from a high-level perspective. Some of the things that I think, again, from a high level, that we need to include in the grants, both for the sake of winning the grant and for conceptualizing the entire area. The public restroom is a number-one priority. That area has been closed. We don't have a bathroom anywhere from Moro Rock all the way to Dockside, and that is way too long of a distance. I do appreciate the location of the new restroom and do think we might need an additional one down the road somewhere halfway between. I do support the stage area if it is level ground. That allows the space to be far more flexible than a raised stage. I do support one to three landscaping areas. I would especially love it if one of those was dedicated to an educational planting area that showed Moro Bay residents how to plant drought-resistant landscaping that is native to this local area. I definitely support one to three historical or cultural exhibits, ideally ones that are held in custodianship with local organizations for the sake of upkeep and savings in management. I support two playgrounds, at least one of which is ADA accessible. I support the removal of the underused basketball court, even as a basketball player myself. Fencing that belongs nowhere in Coleman Park nor do sport courts in a water-dependent area. Keep the dirt parking lot for sup and kayak loading and unloading exactly where it is, like the previous caller said. Less asphalt is better, less concrete is better. Parking and safety are important. I guess that's the end of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it. Highland, next public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next, we have Erica Crawford.
Okay. Welcome, Erica.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Happy New Year. Thanks to be here with you tonight. Hope you all have a nice holiday season. My comments are very brief. The chamber submitted some analysis and comment around your city goals and objectives back in September, and we did a lot of extensive outreach in our membership to prepare those comments to you. And what we found for the first time among our members and in the business community is that there is sort of a concern over cleanliness and sanitation and maintenance and aesthetics. One of the recommendations we have made was to develop a plan for the enhancement of landscaping for the harbor walk between Beach Street and the Rock. And lo and behold, this grant application addresses that. So, you know, we are fully supportive of staff recommendation. It's been a delight to see how excited city staff is to move this forward. Pam Newman is beaming about this project. I've seen it myself. And clearly, some of the community engagement has been very meaningful. And, you know, having incredible heads like Sean Green providing extensive comment is testament to that. So the chamber is very much supportive of staff recommendation to move forward with the grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Highland, next public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no more raised hands in the queue.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll bring it back, a closed public comment, bring it back to council. Per Mr. Qualick's suggestion, if you will look at page 150 of the staff report, it contains the five input questions that staff is looking for council input on now and then any other summary comment you may have would be appropriate. And so, yes.
Would you mind if I raised a couple of points of clarification?
Sure.
I just received some communication. I think Mr. Newmeyer was, for some reason, unable to take his mute off, but he, I don't know. Do you want to just jump in?
Can you all hear me now?
Yeah.
Oh, great, wonderful. Sorry, there was some computer glitch. I was trying to answer Councilmember Barton's question. There is no need for council to specify tonight the maximum amount of the grant that is going to be applied for, other than it's being proposed from $400,000 to $1 million. And according to the fiscal impact section of the report, there is enough money right now to provide the matching funds. So the authorization that's being sought is for staff to proceed with basically seeking the grant, applying for it. And there is money there to provide, according to the report, any matching funds that would be needed. So hopefully, that answers Councilmember Barton's question prior.
Thank you, Chris.
And I have one more point of clarification. I misrepresented, I mentioned that we would have a consultant to help us with the grant application. It's actually a lobbyist, more correctly categorized, so I want to clarify that.
A consultant lobbyist, okay. That works. All right, are we good, Greg?
We're good.
Okay. Good. Council, page 150. Who would like to start us off on any input? Looking for any raised hands? Councilmember Heller, yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Greg, first of all, thank you for the way you've been handling this project. And it's just a great way. And I did attend one of your sessions. It was extremely interesting to hear you take the input and be genuinely interested in it. And I appreciate your explanation at the beginning of the presentation tonight that this is very conceptual, just trying to identify some of the elements. I suspect if you ask five people to give their opinion on these five things, you'll get five very different answers. But it sounds like you're open to that, so here we go. Number one, the parking spaces and consolidated parking. I support consolidated parking, absolutely. I am concerned, as Sean Green mentioned, that that area where people launch their kayaks, that parking that's opposed, like what you have drawn in there, will not work. People need to pull in their vans and their trailers with their ten kayaks on them and so forth in order to access that area. That's my only concern about parking. And frankly, I do support parking along Coleman Drive. I think that's a really smart thing to do, assuming we give enough space to it so that it's safe. Number two, I support a plaza, frankly, in there someplace. And I think it's a great idea to have the rec services manage the use of it. And if there's potential revenue in the future for the city, that would be great, too. Cultural amenities, absolutely. I think those are very important. Let's see. The one thing that is not really on your list that I want to address, and that is, there's a lot of use in that area of the tables and the little barbecues. And I think it would be great to have that carried forward. A lot of people like to come there and eat with their families and cook a hot dog or something. I personally like walking by there and seeing people enjoying that space and doing that. Let's see here. Number four, I think you've got that. Number five, no, and then it's not really on the list, but I'm not a huge fan of having courts of any kind in that area. But again, talk to five people, you'll get five different comments. So thank you again for the process, and I look forward to this, and I'm excited about it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Appreciate that. Councilmember Ford, yes, please.
I believe Councilmember Barton's hand was up first, if that matters, and I think also Addis.
I don't know, whoever appears at the top of the screen, so.
The hands look the same, you know.
Sorry.
I'm just saying, last time, you know, I got to go first, so.
And so, Councilmember Barton, I'll go from the bottom up, I guess, this time.
Okay, okay. I wanted to chime in on the great process that has gone into this, developing this concept plan. I was at both of the meetings that were held out in the park, and it was great fun to see how much people were enthused about this. And there were a number of moms and small kids and just, people were very excited about it. The, I, one of the things that I was hoping to see included in the list here was maybe some additional lighting. There's a lot of people who are out walking along here in the evenings, and there are parts of this trail a little farther to the left off the edge of the page where it can be quite dark. And so perhaps with the, if the parking lot were to stay here where the current basketball court is, that might be an opportunity to put some lights in the end of it that would shine out onto the walkway. Let's see, what else? Oh, and I saw a comment from Walter Heath today about dune landscaping rather than necessarily any kind of succulents or just straight, what do I want to say? Drought-tolerant landscaping, but that doesn't seem to hold up well out there. And so it's the more of an effort towards dune landscaping to be the kind of plant that can get walked on more than others. And then the last thing was, I wanted to thank you for reconsidering the use of plastic play equipment. The, one of the meetings where I was, all the moms were very much more for hands-on things that excited play in children more so than the plastic play equipment. So thank you a lot, Greg, for putting this together.
Thank you, Councilmember Barton. Councilmember Addis, please.
I hate to say it, Mayor, but I was actually last. Councilmember Ford, go first.
This is true confession tonight.
I was told that whoever is on the top of my screen who's answered, but anyway, go ahead, Dawn.
All right. Is that okay, Councilmember Ford?
That'll teach you, Jim.
Yes, yes, no, I love that we're all so polite. Yes, go for it.
I actually want to echo the, many of the comments of my colleagues on question number one around ADA and consolidated parking to a smaller footprint. I definitely support that. I have a little bit of concern about those parallel spaces, and I don't think it has to get worked out this moment. I want to see us get the grant and then come back to that. But the concern arises from seeing folks who get frustrated going towards the rock, just flip a U-turn in the middle of the two-lane road there. And I think if they see those parallel parking spaces, they may just decide to do that, to grab one of those spaces, because you could never get down to the rock and back and still have an empty space on a busy day. So, but overall, I absolutely support ADA parking and more consolidation. I love the idea of a stage or a plaza for small events, and I love the idea of people being able to see them from their kayaks or from their boats. We've been up to Giants Stadium in the Bay Area. There's always kayakers watching the baseball game from the water out there. You see it in Cayucus for Fourth of July, so I think it's a wonderful addition. And in terms of, let's see, question three, I don't think there's anything I wouldn't support. Question four, I want to agree with what Walter Heath said about dune landscaping. Question four, I want to agree with what Walter Heath said about dune landscaping. I got that email as well, and what, uh, Councilmember Barton said about the lighting, I think is really important, as well as tables and barbecues. I do think those are things that, uh, people enjoy, and especially by the water. And then, um, areas to preserve, I don't think this is an issue, but of course, there's the monument currently there for the first, uh, Filipinos to come to the United, you know, to, uh, to America. So I know there's plans for that anyway, and I'm not saying it should be preserved at Coleman Beach, but I just want to bring up that that will be preserved. And that's all my comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. And Councilmember Ford, you're finally up.
Yay. All right. Okay, well, I'll, I'll make this pretty quick. I'll go through, um, number one, of course, I support, um, ADA accessible parking. I agree with Councilmember Addis's, um, concern about U-turns in the middle of that, you know, that drive. Um, so if there's some way to, I, I don't know if there's a way to prevent that, but, um, but yes, yes to number one. Number two, um, yes, I do support a stage. I do agree. Um, I love the picture that was included, the, um, the example that was given, um, where it looked very flat, very low, um, and so wouldn't inhibit the, the views of the, of the bay, so I think that's great. So yes, I do support that. Um, number three, uh, there are not, there's not anything that I would not support at this time. I guess it would, you know, if I was presented the cultural amenities, I might be able to be a little bit more picky then, but as far as just grasping the bat of air, I don't have anything at this time. Number four, are there any, um, let's see here, uh, no, there isn't anything else, um, I would like included. And then, um, well, except for, I do want to also echo what has been said a few times about making sure that there is access, uh, for kayakers and sup, you know, stand-up paddle boarders to get down. Um, I don't want that to be inhibited or blocked, um, so they can access that area. And to take that into consideration, I know that it's, you know, it's recreational use for not just tourists and for locals, but it's also for organizations such as, um, Project Surf Camp that utilizes that space every year for their stand-up paddle camp and other camps as well that have, um, developed over the years. So, um, I would like to see that continue, um, that space to be there. And then, um, let's see here, are there any other areas that I would like to see preserved? No, I, I don't think so. And, um, I know it was mentioned before about the, the basketball court being used. Is it, I think we have to really think about the fact that, you know, if it's there, sure, it might be used, but it's also, like, it's been mentioned, there's a chain link fence around it in order for something like that to be there. Do we want a large chain link fence still there in that area, um, you know, disrupting the view of the bay and of the Rock? So that's something I think we really need to consider is, um, you know, the placement of something like that again in that area. So, and I know it's been moved. I noticed it was in a different location, but still, do we want a big giant chain link fence around a court? So, um, that's pretty much it. Uh, and I also like the idea of the dunes, uh, landscaping as well, because we want it to be sustainable. We want it to be, um, we want it to survive and not to be hard to maintain. So, that's it. That's all I got for you. And I appreciate the, uh, report being done and the grant being written by both you and Pamela. Um, Greg, I really appreciate it. You guys have been working hard. I also attended that very first, um, workshop that you guys put on, and I really want to commend you for putting on that additional one. You listened to the public. Um, I think a lot of people were, you know, writing in and saying, hey, I'm a working parent, I can't come during the day. And you guys made it happen. And so I feel like making that accessible to as many of our citizens as possible was super important, and I commend you for doing that. So, um, great job, you guys.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Ford. It's always great to go last, because now I got all the best of the best comments that were made, and I get to pick the ones that I like. But, um, great input. Pam Newman, thank you so much for your work on this. Um, we so appreciate, um, not only what you've done, but your passion surrounding this project. Uh, it's so cool to see this beautiful area start to hopefully sprout. Greg, once again, kudos to you. Um, again, I mentioned it, great process. I'll just echo it. It's so important to engage our community and, and to provide appropriate opportunities for all people groups to participate, and, um, I just applaud you for that. Um, I'm really excited. I'm gonna, uh, support the staff report. My, my personal input, maybe not in, in, because I've tried to capture everybody's notes, but I support consolidated parking, um, ADA accessible, of course. I support parking along Coleman Drive as well. I agree with the comments on access for kayakers being maintained. I do support, uh, the plaza, um, stage. Um, I would be concerned about height. Um, I love, I've been to the Giant Stadium. Most of those kayaks are out there looking for home run balls, and it's really kind of cool to see that. But I do support that. I think it would be cool to kayak over there and, and to have a concert going on, so, um, I highly support that. I agree with, um, the comment, uh, regarding, oh, and I support the cultural resources, um, and I know we'll learn more about what those may be in the future. Um, I liked Councilmember Barton's, uh, comment about additional lighting. I would agree with that. Um, also dune landscaping, uh, that Walter Heath, um, mentioned. Um, uh, let's see. And, um, I, I do think you need a second bathroom, personally. It doesn't have to be as big, but it's a long distance from that bathroom all the way down to the end over there. So the consideration for possibly a second bathroom on the far end of that towards the Rock, um, would be something I would consider. And then my last comment is just to, to pay attention to height limitations and not have any significant impacts on, uh, visual, or any significant visual impacts. Great work. Looking forward to seeing this, uh, move forward and, and, and get this thing happening. And, um, with that, I think you've, if you've gotten enough, sir, did we answer everything you needed?
Yeah, that was wonderful input. Thank you so much, City Council, for that.
Great. And we'll entertain a motion at this time.
I'll move to approve this item.
Motion, I think. Councilmember Addis to approve staff recommendation, seconded by Councilmember Heller. Um, any further discussion? Just want to say thank you to Councilmember Barton for bringing up the question about the, the grant and the process and getting clarification for that. I very much appreciate that. Councilmember Addis, did you have a hand?
Yes, I also wanted to say thank you to staff. I think it was Pam Newman that, um, did the rendering, and it's just beautiful and so helpful to get to see the different options of, you know, what kind of, what the stage might look like, or what the different, um, portions of this might look like. And it really helped me revisualize this area of Morro Bay that I do think is, is a critical area for our city. But, um, I knew our staff was really good. I didn't know that these kinds of skills existed, so I thought it was fabulous and appreciated.
Um, uh, if, if I may add that Ms. Newman is here, uh, next to me and, uh, responds, you're welcome.
Ah, great, great. All right.
I will speak to Pam that it was delightful to see how she lit up at the, um, public meetings. She was truly excited about this project, and it, it bubbled over to the people who were there.
Fantastic. All right, we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes.
Great work, staff. Appreciate you so much and welcome back. Happy New Year. Um, we're gonna go to item D, Council Declaration of Future Agenda Items. Councilmember Addis, please.
I did want to ask if my colleagues would support a future agenda item, uh, so that the policy around considering council compensation would come back more tied to when bargaining unit compensation was decided, so just after that, rather than after four years.
Rather than getting into specifics, um, can we just, um, suggest bringing back the policy for review with regard to timing of increases?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Sure. But I should be clear, my, you know?
Yeah.
I should, I should be clear about, um, specifically what I would want to know about, which is.
Right. Go ahead. Go ahead. Yeah.
Just that, that the timing, uh, be looked at more specifically.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, I would support it. Looking for head nods?
Order.
Okay. Looks like, yeah, looks like we have, uh, majority support. Um, I have one item. It's the routine housekeeping, uh, that we do every two years. Um, and that would be the review of Advisory Board Handbook. Um, and so it would be a future agenda item to consider appointing, um, a council subcommittee again, um, to look at, uh, the review, which we do every two years of the, um, Advisory Board Handbook.
I support that.
Yeah. We haven't memorialized it. Perhaps we should, but, um, and, okay, good. Anything else? All right, seeing no hands. Well, thank you very much. Um, welcome back. Um, thanks, staff, for all of your great work, and, uh, happy New Year once again to our community. The next regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, January 25th, 2022, at 5:30 PM via teleconference. Be safe and be well. Good evening.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Dana, Scott.
Hi, everyone.
Thank you.
Councilmembers.